Then let's begin. Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of October 28, 2021 to order. Councilmember Garner, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. We stand if you are willing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garner. Next, City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you. Next, we have three presentations, presentations tonight. So the first is an update about the Monarch Apartments groundbreaking. We have a few slides for the council and the community. So today, you see us there. Thank you to staff for putting these together because we were just doing this less than four hours ago. Today, we had our groundbreaking for Chalk's Monarch Apartments, which is the city's first new affordable housing project in over a decade. So we were joined there by State Treasurer Fiona Ma, who's so committed to our region. And actually, this is the second time in two weeks, I think, I've seen her in the Inland Empire. So really grateful to her leadership for being present in Palm Springs to celebrate this with us, as well as Supervisor Perez, who's also been a leader with the county in supporting this project. So this will be 60 multifamily affordable housing units. You can see the address there on the slide, and you can see us in the groundbreaking. So the city council unanimously supported this project and moved it forward, and we provided nearly $3 million in, in value to this project. So we provided the city-owned land, which was almost $1 million. We gave direct funding, over $1 million to this project, and we also waived fees and things like that to make sure this project got done. So this is a long time coming. I actually met with Chalk four years ago when I was a councilmember elect, and they wanted to come to Palm Springs and do their first project in Southern California. And we said yes, and the city council continued to support them through a difficult road because it's so difficult to get these projects financed. They've done an incredible job. We're so grateful for their leadership and for the 60 units for families who will be able to affordably live in Palm Springs, which is so needed now during our housing crisis. So thank you to the county and Chalk and, and Treasurer Ma and everyone in the full city council, really. This has been years and years of work, and city staff and county staff as well. So we wanted to update the community about the great news that we are seeing our housing policies pay off and result in housing being built in the city of Palm Springs. Next, we have a presentation for the new Downtown Park Grand Opening Celebration. I think I'm giving this presentation too, but city council, feel free to jump in. We can, you can add your comments at the end, and if you have them about the Monarch Homes, you can as well. I know Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and Councilmember Woods were there today at the groundbreaking. And we were there together at the new Downtown Park. The park is now open, brought to you by the city of Palm Springs and our Measure J tax dollars. Thank you so much to our residents for taxing themselves with Measure J, a one cent sales tax, to fund the downtown redevelopment and finalizing or redevelop downtown and investing in an amenity like this, which is a beautiful park for our community. If you haven't been there, we encourage you, please visit, take photos, post them on social media, bring your friends and family. So you can see just this beautiful water feature with a waterfall and water on the ground for kids and anyone who wants to play in the water. I know that was my favorite part of the opening, was watching the kids splash around in the water. We had a pooch contest, a Halloween costume contest for dogs. You can see a photo there. And then you can see stakeholders. So thank you to Measure J, commissioners, the Chair of the Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, city staff, all of the, you know, everyone who's involved in the construction and design, and especially Rios for just a really beautiful, incredible park, which is such a testament to our community and our natural environment. And then down at the bottom, you can see that we have an amphitheater for free community events and concerts in the park, which I'm just so excited about. So you can see there ABBA Fab playing, and we got to enjoy their music. So great community event. So glad that everyone who was able to make it and celebrate and looking forward to decades and decades more to come of, of fun and community gathering at this park. Do any councilmembers have any comments on those presentations that you'd like to add? Seeing none. That next, we will move to our city manager, Justin Clifton, and our Acting Police Chief Melissa Demeray on an update on implicit bias training. City Manager?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. We had a leadership team meeting last week, or actually earlier this week, where Acting Chief Demeray presented on some of the training that our police department has done, which was not only great to impart some of that knowledge on the rest of the team, but I just noted how impressive it is that while the team is somewhat shorthanded and overextended, that they continue to push forward, not just on the basic training that's needed, but really the training that's needed in the modern era of policing, where we're always trying to improve relationships with community members. And the content was really rich. So I wanted Acting Chief to come in and just explain a little bit to you and the community about some of the things that our officers are doing, both officers and support staff, to really modernize and, and to account for the kinds of training like implicit bias that are really necessary to make sure that we're serving all of Palm Springs. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Acting Chief to give you a few more details on the training program.
Thank you very much. So over the span of three weeks, we presented a principled policing course to our entire department. This training was so important that we presented it to both our law enforcement officers and our non-sworn professional staff. Each of these courses were a full day of training, and tonight I'm going to share just a small portion of the material that was presented during that training at our department. In addition to learning about procedural justice and implicit bias, we talked about our goals in policing and expectations of and for law enforcement officers. We learned about and defined different types of bias, including stereotypes, prejudice, and discrimination. And we also discussed the historical role of policing and the impact that that history has on modern-day policing. This course is based on a curriculum developed by Stanford and Yale University professors in partnership with the Chicago Police Department. The course material was created and brought to California in partnership with the California Peace Officer Standards and Training, the California Department of Justice, the Oakland and Stockton Police Departments, Stanford Spark, and the California Partnership for Safe Communities. Palm Springs Police Department Sergeants Miguel Torres and Pedro Nanyas, and Officers Josh Crocker and Stephanie Sandoval intended to train the trainer course on these topics at the Stockton Police Department, and they brought this presentation and provided the training to our entire staff. The training prompted some really constructive conversation and was incredibly well-received by our team. We talked about the Four Tenets of Procedural Justice. Those are voice, neutrality, respect, and trustworthiness. And although we talked about these tenets primarily framed from a law enforcement perspective, these are applicable in all of our lives, both personally and professionally. Trust is built by giving others a voice, treating them with dignity and respect, and being neutral and transparent when we make decisions. There is a direct correlation between procedural justice and police legitimacy. If officers are given a voice, decisions are made with transparency, they are treated with respect, and there is trust within our organization. They are in turn more apt to treat those that they come into contact with the same way. A community's perception of their law enforcement organization or the legitimacy of it is shaped by an officer's encounter and whether they believe that those encounters are procedurally just. This doesn't mean that officers don't make arrests or hold violators accountable or refrain from having tough conversations. What it does mean is that our interactions are done in a way that preserves dignity and works to build a greater level of trust. Implicit bias are thoughts and feelings about people that we're unaware of and can influence ours and others' actions. It's unconsciously developed. Everyone has bias and no one is immune to it. The human brain automatically processes, processes and categorizes information that it receives. We all have our own individual personal experiences and different stimuli in our lives, and our brain processes this information that we've received and unconsciously attributes traits or characteristics that may be unique to an individual and applies them into an entire group of people. We can develop feelings or beliefs about people based on our own personal experiences, the, the experiences that have been shared with us, to, with us by others, how and where we were raised, our profession, and even television and movies and media and social media can have an impact on that. We can have implicit biases on any number of things, including race, gender, age, sexual orientation, ethnicity, profession, or disability. Relying on bias leads us to oversimplified conclusions about an entire group of people. Implicit bias can affect how we perceive things, how we behave, where we direct our attention, how we interpret people's behavior, and how we interact with others. Studies have shown that when we're tired, stressed, threatened, multitasking, or new at something, we rely more heavily on implicit bias. And although we all have bias, recognition and awareness of this bias is a first step in mitigating the impact that it has on us. As law enforcement officers, we can mitigate our biases by attending training courses like the one that we hosted, better managing our time, reducing stress and fatigue, holding ourselves accountable, and continuing to have positive contacts with the community. We work to provide an exceptional level of service to the city of Palm Springs, but recognize that in the United States, officers have enforced laws and engaged in discriminatory behavior based on race, ethnicity, and sexual orientation. There are those that have abused their power, exceeded their lawful authority, and violated community trust. We discussed that the impact that this history, some of it very recent, has, has on police and community relations right now. The photograph on the left side of this slide shows a law enforcement officer wrestling an American flag from a young man in Jackson, Mississippi in 1955, while his partner holds a sign that says, "No more police brutality." Picture in the center is a memorial erected at the Stonewall Inn in 2019, 50 years after it was raided by New York City police officers as part of ongoing police harassment of the LGBTQ community. The last photograph is George Floyd, whose murder at the hands of former Minneapolis officer Derek Chauvin sparked a national conversation about police accountability and reform. The Fugitive Slave Act of 1850, the Convict Lease Program, Jim Crow laws, Japanese-American internment, and Rosa Parks's fight against segregation. All of these are examples where policing was used as a form of control in law enforcement detained or arrested people based on race or ethnicity. The NAP Commission concluded that the New York Police Department had systematic corruption problems, and Rodney King was beaten by LAPD officers. So we talked about what we can do and how we move forward together as law enforcement and communities, understanding that people that we come into contact may distrust or even be fearful of law enforcement. We recognize that we have the opportunity to impact perception with every single contact that we make. We have some very unique opportunities to connect with our community here in Palm Springs, with our community police academies that we host in both English and Spanish, our Police Explorer Program, our School Resource Officer Program, National Night Out, Town Hall Meetings, Toy Drives, and organized neighborhood involvement, just to name a few. Chances to have positive impacts are not limited to these situations because we have the ability to practice the Tenets of Procedural Justice with every single contact we make. We can build trust, give people a voice, and have the opportunity to change their mind and hearts. We share an outstanding relationship with our community, but we recognize that as law enforcement officers, we have a profound responsibility and obligation to this city and to the law enforcement profession as a whole, to hold ourselves accountable. We are going to continue to incorporate the concepts that I've shared with you today in our everyday interactions and with ongoing training. Thank you for allowing us to share this.
Thank you, Acting Chief. Very much appreciate it. Do any councilmembers have questions for the presentation? Seeing none. Thank you so much. Thank you for doing this with our police department. We appreciate your leadership. The next item is acceptance of the agenda. City Council will discuss. The order of the agenda may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on the consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any item or items that staff or councilmembers would like remove? First, I'll start with staff. Do you have any items at this time?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any items they'd like to remove for separate discussion, or note abstentions, or no votes? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to remove item 1I as an Indian Canyon, and I would like to request that we move item 5C, the discussion of the Potential Navigation Center, up to the beginning of our discussion, so that we can deal with this issue when we are at our freshest.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just was discussing, we often put important conversations at the very end when it's very late. So I appreciate you raising that.
5C is in Kawiya.
Thank you. Great job with the Palm Springs theme. And so that would be to consider that after public hearings? Is that right?
I'd like to move it right to the very beginning.
Perfect. So after the consent calendar?
Yes.
City Clerk, would that work?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers like to poll or note votes for consent calendar items? Not seeing any? Can I have a motion to accept the order of the agenda with item 5C to occur following consideration of the excluded consent calendar items and item 1I as an Indian Canyon polled for separate discussion? Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Don't move. I'll second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we would like to request a report of closed session from our city attorney, Jeff Ballinger.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. The city council met earlier in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on tonight's agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. It's always a mouthful. So agenda items on the council agenda that are not public hearing items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you're speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. We shoot for around 9:00 PM. So tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. City Clerk, if you could please begin.
David Friedman, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holstich, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and councilmembers. My name is David Friedman. I am Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Commission on Agenda Item 5B. As outlined in the Climate Action Roadmap and Staff Report developed with input from the Commission, climate change has a profound impact on Palm Springs, from droughts to extreme heat to fires in the nearby hills. Although the city has taken actions such as the move to carbon-free energy from desert community energy that led the city to achieve its goal of reducing GHE emissions to 1990 levels by 2020, much more work needs to be done to achieve additional state GHE reduction and energy efficiency goals. The Commission has done substantial work developing two ordinance proposals referred to in the staff report, one to require energy efficiency standards for existing single-family homes beyond the California Energy Code, and another to require cannabis grow facilities and larger commercial businesses to use carbon-free energy. Further GHE reductions can be achieved by adopting cost-effective electrification requirements for new buildings, as many other California jurisdictions have done. We request council direction on whether to move forward with our work on these ordinance proposals and conduct further research on building electrification options with input from staff and consultants as needed. with input from staff and consultants as needed, and bring ordinances to council for consideration following stakeholder input. Council should also provide direction on actions to reduce GHE emissions from transportation and the city's internal operations. Most importantly, the fight against climate change requires additional staff resources and a coordinated commitment to sustainability across all city departments, not just the Office of Sustainability. Palm Springs must continue to demonstrate its sustainability leadership with personnel and policies that will serve as an example to our valley and state. Thank you for your consideration. I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ragdo Zachariah, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good afternoon, City Council. Hope everything is well, and thank you for the beautiful park downtown. I'm calling regarding two items. The first one about the homeless building that projects you're planning to conduct. We are, in my neighborhood, we are not in... We are all for finding a solution for homelessness. However, this location does not, is not the right location. This area is highly intensified by residential area. We already have a problem with drugs, shooting, and theft. It's going to cost you $6 million. And I know you, this is attracting to you because of the two buildings on it, which is a tear down. So I urge you to move it to another location. You do have other options, as this is going to make a huge problem for District 1. The other item I would like to speak, I am all for freedom of speech and politics. I'm just kind of scratching my head when I found that you're planning to send a letter to the District Attorney ACLU regarding Sheriff Bianco. I am all for speaking out. However, I look at it, the City Council's job is to take care of the city of Palm Springs. This is political. And I know the mayor, Shilak Mayor, that is running for opposition, but that's the right time to bring that in voting. I'm not really, I don't understand why you're bringing the name of the city of Palm Springs and filing a lawsuit and so on. And the other thing I would, in your discussion, I'd like to hear from the city manager his thoughts on this. And I also noticed that you have more than one organization. And I'd like every single organization spelled out that is going to be in cooperation of filing that lawsuit. I think it's not a priority, it's going to create a problem. And this leads me to the voters. Thank you so much, and happy good evening.
Francisco Ramos, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and distinguished council members. My name is Francisco Ramos. I'm giving comments on behalf of Joy Silver, a Palm Springs resident. The first comment is regarding the Homeless Navigation Center. Joy would like to reiterate that I would like to go on record as supporting the Palm Springs proposed Homeless Navigation Center, poised to provide a full suite of support services necessary to serve our unhoused population. Navigation centers have proven effective in meeting the needs of the unhoused in our cities, and we are sorely in need of this flexible approach to services that allows our city to accommodate individuals who otherwise face barriers to coming indoors. In light of the city's recent success with Martha's Village and The Kitchen's ability to provide its professional management to the Palm Springs Access Center, I have full confidence in the Palm Springs partnership. Martha's, one of largest providers of homeless services in the Coachella Valley and Riverside County, has a history dating back to before 1990. Possessing the strong operational necessary for this endeavor, they have the experience to assure effectiveness and long-term sustainability of a navigational center. Thank you to the City Council for moving forward with this proposal, to those who advocate from the county inside, and to the advocates and residents supporting this solution. My second comment is regarding Sheriff Chad Bianco. Again, from Joy, I would like to voice my support to the City Council for issuing a letter of support for the ACLU's request for investigation into Sheriff Bianco. He is among those sheriffs who believe that they are above the law and has repeatedly demonstrated that he is an extremist with dangerous views. He's added many guns to our streets since he's become elected. His conspiratorial, anti-vaxxer, anti-masker rants are on mainstream and social media. His idea of public safety is shown by his use of excessive force, his racist policies, and his inability to do his actual job has put all of Riverside County at risk. He must be held accountable, and we must vote him out. Thank you for your courage and commitment to stand up for the city of Palm Springs, and thank you for your role in protecting our democracy. From Joy Silver, co-chair of the Bianco Mosca campaign, and myself, Francisco Ramos, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Steve Aguilar, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, commissioners and staff. Exotic Extractions rents the warehouse at 1251 Montavo Way. I'm the owner of the building. These guys have been great tenants and cooperate and do everything they're supposed to do in regards to cannabis guidelines, and I've had no issues with them as tenants. I would like them to be able to offer an additional service to deliver cannabis to their prospective clients. However, I'm a little confused in regards to the retail storefront or non-retail storefront. As I've indicated before, we already have a dispensary that built up a good business, and I don't want to have a two dispensaries with one building competing against each other. It's not the right thing to do and not going to work for the other dispensary. But I do think there is a use for delivery in the Palm Springs area. And again, I'm not sure what the regulations are regarding non-storefront or storefront, but I am not in favor of having retail storefront at this location.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Lena Sola, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city manager, and community members. My name is Lena Sola. I am a member of the Community Partnership on Homelessness. A complex issue like homelessness requires the combination of short, medium, and long-term programs. The city and county are addressing many of these, and I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of current needs. We applaud the city for pursuing the installation of a comprehensive navigation center for the unhoused. We commend the city for closing locations where homeless congregate to buy and sell illicit drugs. We endorse the city's decision to contract with Martha's Kitchen to run the Overnight Cooling Center at the First United Methodist Church during the summer months and set up an access center to provide additional services and case management. I volunteer at the overnight shelter, and I have seen the client steadily increase to full capacity. These clients are extremely thankful to have a place to eat, shower, store their belongings, and sleep safely at night. This satisfies all the suggested criteria listed on Page 2 of the Staff Report. These clients are respectful and are their own community. They are looking for jobs and permanent housing. Some suffer from mental, behavioral, and medical issues, but they are not a group you would associate with substance abuse. Now they are faced with another obstacle. The shelter is closing on October 31st. There needs to be a plan to provide an overnight shelter during the gap period when the shelter closes and the navigation center opens, operating with manufacturing or city supply where no seat is required turned into a temporary shelter. The city is committed to provide our homeless a safe environment. What will become of these clients when they again become unsheltered and exposed to the elements and dangers of living on the street? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. David Vignolo, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holstich, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and council members. My name is David Vignolo, and I'm speaking on Item 1L as in Lima, the request before you to consider whether to issue a letter to the Office of the Attorney General in support of the ACLU and other organizations' requests for an investigation into the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Chad Bianco. As a member of the Riverside Alliance for Safety and Accountability and a Palm Springs resident, I strongly urge you to approve the city manager's recommendation. RASA is a coalition of community leaders and neighbors across the county, including many of your own constituents, who are working together to hold our law enforcement accountable. Like you, we believe we are all safer by having forward-thinking leaders who believe in transparency, public safety, and equal protection under the law. As the draft letter notes, the Riverside Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Bianco have served their responsibility to enforce state and local laws and mandates, leaving our communities at risk for increased spread of the COVID-19 virus, potentially enlivening the pandemic in our region and leading to inconsistent enforcement and compliance throughout the county. Constitutional sheriffs like Sheriff Bianco encourage law enforcement officers to defy or minimally enforce laws that they decide are unconstitutional. They believe sheriffs are the ultimate authority with no limits to their power. This belief is not only unethical and wrong, but it's very dangerous. We stand with you in supporting this urgent call on behalf of all Palm Springs residents to the California Attorney General, requesting he immediately open an investigation into the Riverside Sheriff's Department with respect to persistently inhumane jail conditions and Sheriff Bianco's refusal to protect people in Palm Springs and throughout the county from COVID-19 through the enforcement of legislative mandates and public health emergency orders. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Have a...
David Murphy, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, City Council, city manager, and staff. I am David Murphy, speaking on behalf of the Community Partnership on Homelessness regarding Agenda Topic 5C, the Navigation Center. But before commenting on the agenda topic, allow me to report that our group's petition to temporarily close and reclaim Resto Park generated over 200 signatures with 70 embedded comments in less than 48 hours of its launch, a clear sign of high engagement on the issue. I'm certain the city manager and council appreciate the tremendous support that residents and businesses have for the city taking direct action, such as reclaiming the park. We also hope the city will fully leverage this community goodwill by completing the closure within days and not weeks, as reported in the press. The navigation center progress is extremely encouraging. The scope of the potential services outlined in the Staff Report is spot on. And hopefully, the scope is more than just aspirational, but truly possible. We support the county and city's current focus on the one or two locations with existing buildings and infrastructure that promise the fastest path to full operations. Speed to open is critical, given the magnitude of the crisis at hand on our streets. Secondly, the initial success of managing the secondary community impacts surrounding the new access center are really encouraging and lead us to be optimistic that the same will hold true for the new navigation center. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Jacob Bustos, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jacob Bustos, owner of Exotic Extractions Out in Sea. I am here to discuss mine Item 5A for minor business modification at 1251 Montavo Way, Unit L. Ever since Palm Springs opened the door to cannabis companies, I envisioned operating a retail delivery service out of the greater desert region. I first started down the path of cannabis operations within the city by applying for a distribution license in January 2020. About a year and a half later, we received our city and state cannabis distribution license. With the distribution business now operating, we look to see through our original goal of operating a delivery service here in the city. Today, you will vote on, vote to accept or deny my request, and I can only hope that you will see this as an opportunity for everyone involved to grow within the Palm Springs ecosystem and better serve those residents who would prefer getting their products delivered rather than an in-person visit. Currently, the cannabis business that operates within our building is operating as a dispensary slash lounge. We believe this cohesiveness will provide better access and growth within the greater Palm Springs area. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jacob Bustos.
Thank you. Santos Felix, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Okay, yes, I am here to say that these numbers... Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Santos Felix. I would like to voice a concern and a solution to the homeless population in Palm Springs and throughout the Coachella Valley. The statistics say that only 55% of the homeless population suffer from a diagnosable mental illness, and 44% suffer from addiction. I am here to say that these numbers are grossly understated because I personally go out every day to deliver meals that I prepare to homeless individuals in need. Obviously, I make very small debt in the overwhelming need for food, but my resources are limited. I have not lived the most upstanding life for the first many years of my life. And as such, I feel a need to give back to those who suffer to the best of my ability. I ask the individuals I encounter many questions, such as, where do you eat? Where do you use the restroom? Where do you sleep? What resources do you have available to you in regard to your mental illness or addiction? I would estimate that seven out of 10 of the homeless people I encounter claim they suffer from addiction, and shockingly, at least eight out of 10 claim that they suffer from an untreated diagnosable mental illness. And there is very little help available to them in terms of immediate assistance to any of the resources necessary to attain mental health or help with their addiction. Many of the individuals have a primary issue of mental illness and a secondary issue of addiction as a result of self-medicating, therefore leaving them hopeless, homeless, living in the alcoves of storefronts, urinating in public, and committing crimes that would otherwise not be committed if they had shelter. Food resources to mental health professionals who had a sincere level of care and concern for the forgotten ones who live in the darkness, suffer in silence, and have no hope of ever becoming self-supporting through the contributions. I propose to open a facility...
Mr. Felix, your time is over. Thank you for your comments. Goodbye.
Okay. Thank you.
Sean Emerson, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening. My name is Sean Emerson, and I am speaking on behalf of the Community Partnership on Homelessness regarding Agenda Topic 5C, the Navigation Center. We are encouraged by progress made through the collaboration between the city and county on the funding and location options for the Navigation Center. We know that a lot of people have been working very hard on many levels to make this a reality. The Navigation Center, when fully operational, promises a path out of homelessness, addiction, as well as mental and behavioral health conditions. The model blends sobriety, counseling, housing, educational opportunities, employment training, and healthcare, including addiction counseling and treatment. After reviewing the staff report for the meeting tonight, a couple of things occurred to me. One is that we hope the Navigation will offer an array of flexible, short-term shelter and housing options, such as overnight shelter beds, tiny or pallet houses, and small studio apartments for those that have graduated into a place where they are preparing for the responsibilities of more permanent housing. Secondly, we look forward to learning more about county and city plans to expand access, two, and capacity for addiction and mental health treatment services. We understand that current shortages of funding and space for these much-needed services is an impediment to success. Thank you again for moving the Navigation Center forward. Good night.
Thank you. Brad Anderson, you have two minutes to provide your comments to the City Council.
Yes, Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Ranse Marage. I was just told I have two minutes to talk on all three items that I asked to talk about, and there was a confusion, I guess, today. But anyway, this is a link rack, but I talked about that earlier. I want to talk about Item 1A, 1E, and 1I. This is the AB 361, which you're using to remotely do this meeting today. And there's very many issues wrong with that, and I'm going to start with this. This was drafted back in February 2019. This was drafted back in February 2020, and this is a whole month before the governor did his mandate, so this was a pre-arranged agreement to do this, and it's an urgency clause. So definitely look into it, and of course, you didn't allow the citizens of your city to even review the law because you didn't include it in the staff report today, and that's very critical. I would think that people would understand that. And then item 1E is the reappointment of the Contaminant Rattling Mosquito Rector Controveristic appointed trustee, was Doug Coot, was the veterinarian in town. I used to go to him about 22 years ago, but he also is the general manager's partner in business with his wife, and as he hired her way back 20 years ago, and he sat on two ad hoc committees for general manager for his payways, and he should excuse himself from that. But there's very serious issues here with credibility and ethics, and item 1I is the letter to the Attorney General concerning the Sheriff's Department of Riverside County, which is not your sheriff department or your police department, and it's definitely political, and the mayor should be ashamed of herself. Thank you, and I'm speaking at the non-agenda items, too. Thank you.
Dieter Crawford, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Council staff. My name is Dieter Crawford. I'm vice president of the Desert Island Gateway and Space Community Action Association. I want to speak tonight on the potential homeless navigation center at 3589 McCarthy Road. We understand there's a big need for homeless services all over the country, and our city is not exempt. Palm Springs residents and businesses report worsening problems with the unhoused population, including increased rates of disturbance, trash, violence, mental illness, and substance abuse. However, the Desert Island Gateway and Space Area is not a good treat for this facility. As the community itself has its own problems with substance abuse, mental health, and violence, it seems the city pushes all the less desirable projects to this area, such as cannabis facilities, liquor stores, convenience stores, and affordable housing. Just today, the city broke ground on the Monarch Housing Development, located about a half a mile from the proposed location. Our neighborhood is already a food desert. There are no grocery stores, pharmacies, or banks. We're in desperate need for establishments to stabilize our community, not hinder it further. It's like redlining and de facto segregation to put the homeless services facilities in our neighborhood. This is nimbyism at its finest. The city claims to be inclusive, diverse, and equitable, but none of this is evident in the north end of town. This is immediately adjacent to both single-family and multifamily residential uses and two federally subsidized apartment complexes. This project will negatively impact our residential communities nearby. The staff report says this site is close to public transportation, so by Sunline Transit Route Number Four. This means the homeless will travel directly through our neighborhood, which ultimately causes us to worry about our quality of life. There are several other locations around the city that would be more accommodating and safer with regards to adjacent neighborhoods.
Mr. Crawford, your time's up.
Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Gretchen Gutierrez, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff. My name is Gretchen Gutierrez. I'm the CEO of the Desert Valleys Builders Association. My comments tonight are addressed to item 5B on your agenda later for discussion and consideration to a consulting contract to continue to work reviewing the greenhouse gas emissions that are being generated throughout the city and working towards reduction of those same set emissions. The two points I'd like to bring to your attention tonight, and where my area of concern is and our industry's area of concern is, is that gas continues, natural gas, propane gas, and other renewable sources are continued to be offered to the residential and business communities that we seriously take into consideration our climate zones that we operate here and running to an all-electrification grid would be cost prohibitive to the residents, not just of the city of Palm Springs, but throughout the Coachella Valley. We want to make sure that you consider those costs and that they are a direct impact when electric bills go up, a direct impact when those bills go up to the consumers, whether they are residential users or business users. We'd also like to have you take into consideration older housing stock that predates 2010 and looking at those areas that those homeowners and those businesses could have assistance from the city with regards to remodeling and renovations to bring them both up to code and energy efficiency. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Patrick Weiss, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, Honorable City Council. My name is Patrick Weiss. I'm going to speak regarding Agenda 5C on the Navigation Center. I am strongly in support of the Navigation Center. I am glad to see that something permanent and includes wraparound services for our homeless is now being proposed, and I'm glad to see some of that $10 million that was originally given to the city is being used for that. One of the things I think the Navigation Center will do is improve the quality of life for the homeless and for Palm Springs, as it will get many homeless off the streets of Palm Springs and given needed help. One of the things about placing it in the city is you're going to have nimbyism no matter where you put it, and I think convincing the people in that area that this is different from the previous issue where we had the drop-in center downtown, it will not be the same as that, where people will not be hanging around outside, et cetera, and you'll have specific rules and stuff around for that. My concern is not to be dissuaded from doing this and to use the public doping laws if needed to improve the quality of life for the homeless in Palm Springs, if need be, but I believe this overall is good. The other concern I have is that we take care of the local homeless first, people who have become homeless in the Coachella Valley, Palm Springs, and Riverside County, people from outside the area, if there can be rules and regulations regarding who we accept at the Navigation Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ginny Foote, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you so much. You know, it's so sad that every day I read or hear that we really need to do something about the homeless, and then it's followed by, just don't do it in my neighborhood. So I'm calling because the proposed Navigation Center is in my neighborhood, and I am 100% in favor of it. We do have a serious problem with people not having homes. The unhoused in our community has hit a critical level, and I really want to compliment the city on looking at this in such a broad way in that it's not going to just be fixing one little part of it. So everything I've read in the staff report, I'm excited about. The buildings on there are perfectly suited for this purpose. There's going to be so many services provided there, and the city is looking at all of those services, from small, tiny homes, to actual shelter beds, to job training, to and everyone knows to my favorite thing is people, and one of the reasons why Roy's failed is because they didn't allow homeless people that had animals to come on the property. And so I think that this is going to have a place for animals. It has a lovely park is planned for it, so I really compliment the City Council and the staff on selecting this site. It can be up and running much quicker than building something from the ground, and again, it is in my neighborhood, and I 100% support it. Just quickly on another topic, I really think the city has to do something about the College of the Desert. I read today about their canceling what they were going to do in the industrial city. We have a big hole in the middle of our city with nothing done. I was part of the group that worked really hard in, I think it was 2004, 2005, to pass the bond issue that gave them all the money that they have, and since then, they've done nothing but squander money, and they squandered money on what was supposed to be a great project that they were doing, millions of dollars in North Palm Springs. Now they've squandered millions of dollars in destroying that mall, and I just need, I just-
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment. Madam Mayor and City Council, that does conclude public comment for this evening.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you to everyone for calling in and for engaging with us and participating. We very much appreciate your public comments and your participation. So the next item is City Council and City Manager comments and reports. City Manager, do you have a report at this time?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. City Council, City Council reports, who'd like to begin? Councilmember Garner.
Since I don't have reports all the time, I'll go first. I do wanted to just let people know that CVEP is having their 17th Annual Greater Palm Springs Summit, will be November 18 at 9:00 a.m. Just wanted to flag that for our residents, but also our city council, since we've had more, had lots of questions about CVEP, so this might be a good opportunity to check that out. And I also, while I'm talking about CVEP, wanted to flag that this is something I want to discuss when we start talking about positions and commissions that we're on. I think, again, because we've been having lots of questions about CVEP, it's probably good to get a new representative so that we're hearing other perspectives and not just mine. Next, I wanted to talk about the District One Town Hall that I had on Monday. There was a lot of discussion about the Navigation Center, which I'll save for another time, but I did want to say thank you to everyone who attended. It's always a pleasure to hear from residents and to just let people know, I thought it was, it worked well, so we're going to kind of rotate between weekdays and weekends every other, every other time. That way, we can kind of catch more people. The other is there's going to be a Dia de los Muertos event on November 1 at 5:00 p.m. at the Palm Springs Pavilion. Our Parks and Recs team is taking this on, which I really appreciate. Last year, I did this with my mom and a local artist, and we set it up in Visita del Monte, near Visita del Monte, and it was really fun, but it was also a lot of logistics, and so it's really cool that Parks and Rec is doing it this year, and I get to just attend, which is nice for me. The other thing is that I've been working with Habitat for Humanity for a while now, and we finally were able to do a project in District One. It's still ongoing, and once everything's finished, and I have permission from the property owner, hopefully I can share some photos, but it was such a pleasure to be out in District One doing some hard work for a resident. My parents were there, too. We had a volunteer group from Google, and just so people know, Habitat for Humanity gets lots of requests for volunteering, and so what they do is they identify projects throughout the Coachella Valley, and then they say, oh, sure, Google, you can come and help us with this project. So that's just kind of how it works. But I just was really impressed with the organization and with how much more I know we can accomplish, and they were already identifying other places, residents that they wanted to knock on their door and ask them if they were interested as well. So it was, it was really great, and I do hope that I can talk about this in more depth coming up with our strategic planning, because I think there's a lot of really good work we can do in Palm Springs that is, it doesn't require too much of a heavy lift from city staff, but is still making sure that things are getting done in the city, and that's
Thank you, Councilmember Corrs.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Last week, the Mayor, Councilmember Woods, and I joined former Councilmember J.R. Roberts at the Plaza Theater for a very exciting press conference, and it was announced that David C. Lee, who is a producer, director, writer of many Emmy Award-winning shows, including Frasier and the Jeffersons, and Wings and Cheers, is, has made a lead gift of $5 million to restore the Plaza Theater, and so want to one thank David for that generosity and really thank J.R., who is working to fundraise the $10 million needed as a volunteer, and that's also a truly extraordinary contribution. It was a great event, and I think it really helps get that project that we were also excited about, pre-COVID, back on track and moving forward. So that was really great. I also attended the Palm Springs Animal Shelter's first scavenger hunt fundraiser, which was really a blast. There were 25 teams of four or five for a first-year event. It was great, raised $40,000, maybe a little more, to support the great work that our animal shelter does, so very excited to share that, and that's what I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Middleton.
Thank you. It's been a busy couple of weeks, so as reported in the media, last week Riverside County Transportation Commission met, made recommendations regarding additional funding for the San Gorgonial Pass, Coachella Valley rail project, specifically a request for funding to complete environmental review work, and I'm very pleased that the county supervisors endorsed that last week. The vote at RCTC to continue to keep moving forward on this project was unanimous, representing individuals from every city in Riverside County, so this is a project that is starting to get some real enthusiasm. In the public comments time that was done a couple of months ago, this project received over 500 public comments. It was reported to us by staff that more typically it's something around 100 comments, and I'm very pleased to be able to say that more comments came from the city of Palm Springs than all, than any other city. In fact, we had almost as many comments from our city as the top two other cities combined, so there is clearly interest as we start to move forward. Also participated in a MetroLink Board of Directors meeting. I am an alternate representing the Riverside County Transportation Commission on MetroLink. MetroLink has encountered very substantial drops in the number of passengers during the COVID crisis, primarily because it has been identified as a commuter rail and that people use it for the overwhelming majority of the time to go to and from work. What is very pleasing is the board and staff are recognizing that the future is in leisure travel for rail, and we're seeing much more enthusiasm back in metropolitan Los Angeles, Orange County, Ventura County, for making these connections to our area. Lastly, a couple of things from the Sunline Board of Directors meeting. I want to really thank a couple of members of our community who reached out to me regarding some very problematic service with our, from our local taxi providers, and in one instance, an individual who is disabled was left waiting for over two and a half hours for a taxi to be picked up. That, that report was moved on to Sunline, which is responsible for providing oversight of the taxi operators in the Coach- which is responsible for providing oversight of the taxi operators in the Coachella Valley. Uh, and, uh, there has been, not just simply in our city, but throughout, uh, the region, a very significant uptick in the number of complaints regarding taxi services. Uh, much of that is the result of a significant drop in the number of taxi drivers. Uh, going back to 2019, for the three cab companies here in the Coachella Valley, they averaged together approximately 100 drivers. At, uh, the start of the COVID crisis, they were down to 36 drivers, uh, for our entire region. That has now increased to approximately, uh, 55, uh, drivers, but still well below what is needed, uh, to be able to provide the level of service uh, that people are requesting and needing. I strongly encourage individuals who are calling for taxi service to be very, uh, direct regarding the timeframes that they need to be picked up. Uh, lastly, on Sunline, uh, and I really want to thank my colleague, Mayor Gregory, for Cathedral, from Cathedral City. We pushed very strong, uh, that as Sunline has been developing a, uh, line in cooperation with Cal State, uh, San Bernardino and the College of the Desert that is making a connection directly, uh, from the COD campus to, uh, San Berna, the San Bernardino campus with a stop at the MetroLink station in San Bernardino, that there needed to be a place for folks in the West Valley to be picked up. And, uh, I'm pleased to report that that is going to happen. They are going to open a new stop that will be at the interchange of I-10 and Gene Autry, uh, and Palm. And, uh, want to ask, uh, staff to work with, uh, RCT, or excuse me, with Sunline and our neighboring cities so that we can build a park and ride facility where that stop is going to be, to make it much, uh, more convenient for our, uh, residents across Western, uh, Coachella Valley to be able to, uh, drive to that park and ride, get on a bus and be dropped off at the doorstep of, uh, the MetroLink, uh, connection. Lastly, along with, uh, Councilmember, uh, Garner, Councilmember Woods and Mayor Holstich, I was very pleased, uh, this past Sunday to be present at the, uh, ribbon cutting for the new mental health, uh, facility reopening at the LGBT Community Center on North Palm Canyon in our city. Uh, the services there are free. They are much needed in our community. Uh, and thanks to the generosity of literally, uh, dozens and hundreds of individuals in our community, most particularly the generosity of Eisenhower Medical Center. We now have a state of the art, uh, free mental health facility available to everyone, whether you're a member of the LGBTQ community or not. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to everyone out there, we did it and we are doing it. And let me just, for those of you who don't know, we have more than just these city council meeting. Most or all of us sit on several other entities outside of the city, keeping us incredibly busy doing the work of the city that's beyond just sitting at these council meetings. And when I say we did it, I mean our downtown park that was mentioned by our mayor. The turnout at the downtown park for its grand opening was phenomenal. And I mean absolutely phenomenal. The detailing of the park phenomenal, the overall park phenomenal. It was a great event. We did it. We are still doing it. As Councilmember Corrs said, we are, we are starting off with the help of J.R. Roberts to redo and refurbish the Plaza Theater. We've done more ribbon cuttings, uh, for new businesses after the pandemic than I can remember just in this last week alone. So new businesses are popping up, which is absolutely fantastic. And as, as, as Mayor Protem mentioned, um, the long awaited, um, access, uh, rail access to Palm Springs that is more convenient than what we have is in the works. And with, uh, federal funding, hopefully we'll see that before, um, I'm in the grave, uh, as far as that goes. And if I could have the slide up on the screen. This is something that I've talked about in the past. Um, what this is, is you can see construction workers and our own staff, um, at some of the intersections here in the city of Palm Springs, putting in wiring of force, uh, what they call CV Sync, which is traffic signalization and optimization. So those of you who don't know, Coachella Valley Association of Governments is a, um, regional body that represents all nine cities here in the Coachella Valley, as well as other entities. And they call it C-VAG. And their major effort, um, in this project was to advance the development of a valley-wide traffic signal interconnect master plan and signal signalization of, of both new and existing signals on regional roads. We've already signal synced here in Palm Springs. What this will do is it will create a talking point or a way for the whole valley to talk to us. So during things like special events or moving us on regional roads, it will be much more efficient. What will this do for us? It will intru, it will improve multimodal mobility. It's going to maximize highway and arterial system capacity. It's going to improve operational efficiency, safety and the environment throughout the Coachella Valley. And by the environment, one thing we're going to be talking about later in this meeting is our greenhouse gases. So this will help in, uh, reduce greenhouse gases. And we'll see later in, in the meeting that a lot of those gases come from, um, vehicle sources. And it's going to prepare the agencies in the Coachella Valley for the future by emerging, by, by, um, building for emergency, emerging, excuse me, transportation technology, including connected vehicles, autonomous vehicles, big data, integrated corridor management and smart cities. Within the city of Palm Springs, 34 signals are being modified or upgraded by the C-VAG project. Those, those include 13 on Ramon Road and 21 of them are on Highway 111. So in the picture, I really want to thank two of our staff members, Don and Joel, for their leadership and working with C-VAG to make this happen. So the last thing I want to mention is that, um, one thing that makes us such a great city here is that we have festivals. We have many festivals here and we have many events that make the city really wonderful. And, um, um, Councilmember Garner mentioned one, but I want to mention another one that has been put on by a recreation department and it's on October 29th. And it's called the Halloween, uh, the Haunted Halloween Drive-Thru, which is a free event at James O. Jesse Desert Highland Unity Center. And everyone's invited for Halloween to go there. Another event that's not sponsored by the city, but it's happening is Halloween in Palm Springs. And this is going to be on the Arenas Road between Indian Canyon and Ciel, um, Cali and Celia. And, um, this again is a free event. There will be a suggestion of a $5 donation as you enter to support local charities like DAP Health, Palm Springs Gay Men's Chorus, the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer Community of, Center of the Desert and Greater Palm Springs Pride. And that's going to go from 4 o'clock in the afternoon until, um, after 8:00 p.m. And at 8:00 p.m., there are going to be a costume contest. Anyone can enter with $1,500 in prizes, which is great. And then the last event that we have coming up, which most people know about in the city because it's so big, is Pride Event, the first weekend in November. And whether you're gay, lesbian, bisexual or a supporter of, it's a great event to attend to. And we really, we have, uh, local schools marching, uh, in the parade, which is a, one of the first to ever do it in the country. So I'd encourage anybody who is interested in just having a party in the street or seeing what goes on in the community to come out and participate. And with that, I thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Woods. I have a lot as well. We've had a really busy few weeks here in the city of Palm Springs, which is exciting that, um, you know, we're reopening and having these community events that we've so desperately missed over the next two years. I'm going to go very quickly through some of the items that I've worked on or events that we've gone to. And then I have two policy requests, um, that I'd like to add to council's list to consider. Um, so one, I've been holding, um, bi-weekly COVID working group meetings with hospitals, with community organizations, um, and we've been doing that for over a year. Um, so to talk about issues that clients are facing of those organizations and also to be collaborating on providing testing and vaccination to the community. Um, I also attended, the state had a webinar for their new guaranteed income pilot program. So you'll remember, um, I joined Mayor's for Guaranteed Income and the city council unanimously passed a resolution in support of, um, Mayor's for Guaranteed Income. So the state of California has, um, allocated $35 million for guaranteed income pilot programs focusing on foster youth and pregnant people and possibly other, uh, communities as well. So, um, the state is allocating that in a regional way. Um, so I've, um, attended that to understand how we might be able to get some of those state dollars for guaranteed income for our residents into our community and into our residents' hands, since it's so desperately needed. We also, um, attended, I think we might have talked about this before, but attended the Palm Springs, um, homecoming parade, Palm Springs High School Homecoming Parade. Um, so I just wanted to give them a shout out, um, especially the teacher of the year who was honored there. I also started, um, thanks to the Palm Springs Certified Farmer's Market. I did a mayor's booth at the farmer's market this past weekend. Um, me and Aiden, um, were there answering residents' questions and, um, talking to people about issues and just there within the community. And then we got to do our shopping afterwards. Um, so it was a really fun thing to do and be present in the community. And that's one thing I think we've missed being during COVID and not really being able to have a physical presence in our community. So I'm hoping to do that mayor's, um, booth, meet the mayor, ask the mayor questions, um, booth at the farmer's market and maybe at Village Fest too, if they'll have me. Um, I attended and represented the city and, uh, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, with which Palm Springs chairs the executive committee this year. Um, we attended our CV Link grant opening in Palm Desert and Palm Desert's, um, San Pablo Block Party. So they renovated that street, San Pablo, in Councilmember Quintanilla's district. Um, and it was really beautiful to see what the city's done and to see CV Link integrated into, you know, pedestrian areas, um, and to see they had food trucks set up. Um, and they had a really beautiful community celebration. So it's so great to be there in Palm Desert. Um, I wanted to flag that, uh, Mayor Protem Middleton was awarded the, uh, the Legacy Award, um, at the LGBTQ Centers, Center Stage Gala, um, at the Air Museum this past weekend too. So it was such an honor, um, to be there, um, in support of Mayor Protem and to hear her speak, which was incredibly powerful and talk about, um, staying in our communities as LGBTQ people, um, and, and building better futures for the, the young people coming up behind us. So thank you to Mayor Protem for all of her trailblazing and her leadership. Um, and congratulations to you for receiving that important award. I, um, also wanted to note just a few upcoming items. So UC Riverside Women's Center is having their annual persist conference about women in politics. Um, Mayor Protem and I have participated a few na, years now. Um, and we are speaking this weekend at that event about, um, LGBTQ city council leadership and representation. So for anyone who's interested about issues around women in politics, please join us for that conference on Friday and Saturday. Uh, we have the DAP Desert AIDS Project, DAP Health Desert AIDS Walk coming up this weekend. So I wanted to invite the community to that as well. Uh, many of us on city council will be there, um, to, uh, kick off the walk. So that's this coming Saturday in the mornings. Registration starts at 7:00 a.m. And thank you to Councilmember Woods for listing some of the Parks and Rec Halloween events. So I just wanted to flag that for the community too. Um, Parks and Rec put on a floating pumpkin patch, uh, at our pool. And, um, tomorrow they're doing a haunted Halloween drive-through at James O. Jesse. Um, and there's a number of events. So I ask everyone to look for that information online. And please join us in celebrating Halloween in Palm Springs. I'm really glad that some of these events are coming back. Um, so my two policy requests. One, you just heard everything I did, not everything I did. A portion of what I've done in the last week as city council and as many of our residents know that these are part-time jobs that are paid part-time wages. Um, and I have a policy request, um, for future council, councils, um, about childcare, um, access. So right now we don't have a policy to provide, um, childcare to residents who are attending these meetings or to support city staff or to support council members who might have additional childcare costs or even elder care costs, um, to participating in meetings and participating in city events. And I, as we have elections coming up for city council, um, I want to make sure that we continue to allow parents to fully participate, um, in our city government and makes it for richer, um, conversations and a better democracy and better future for our kids and our families, um, as well as people who are caretaking for, for elders as well. Um, so very much would love to see us have a policy to support, um, childcare infrastructure um, in the city of Palm Springs for both council members and for the community. And then I received last, in a busy few weeks, um, last I received a request for the city of Palm Springs to join the 30 by 30 Coalition. So this is an international coalition that was proposed in April 2019 by a group of 19 prominent scientists, um, for a global deal for nature. So designed to encourage world leaders and local leaders to prioritize conservation as a means to combat climate change and biodiversity loss. Um, hundreds of scientists and governments and residents around, um, have gone onto this. So I, I'm hoping, um, to ask the 70 mayors have already agreed to participate on a local level. 50 countries have adopted programs for 30 by 30. And President Biden has launched that campaign. And Governor Gavin Newsom has signed an executive order in favor of the 30 by camp, 30 by 30 campaign. Um, thinking that we will conserve 30% of our open space and nature by 2030. So I know that Palm Springs leads the way on climate response, um, and conservation of our open spaces. Um, and I would love to see us have a conversation about signing the pledge and joining this coalition and also looking at what we can do locally to continue to conserve our open space. Um, so with that, if there are no other council member comments, we will move to the consent calendar. Um, so I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without, um, item 1I, which has been removed for separate discussion. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you, there's a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote on the consent calendar, please?
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Corrs.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. So next we will move to the excluded consent calendar items. And the one and only is item 1I as an Indian Canyon. This is, um, a request to authorize issuance of a letter to the Office of the Attorney General in support of the ACLU's request for an investigation into the Sheriff, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, um, and Sheriff Chad Bianco. And Mayor Protem Middleton pulled this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to try to keep this very brief. Uh, the ACLU letter is an extremely powerful letter uh, and outlines a number of issues and, uh, and allegations, provides, uh, some direct evidence, uh, for those, if they are true, found to be true. Uh, the consequences for these actions should be, uh, rather considerable. Uh, the cover letter, uh, is, uh, is however, uh, something I need. The cover letter is, however, something I need, think we need to be careful with regard to. The cover letter, as it's now written, in many respects, is a repeat of what is in the letter from the ACLU. What is going to be alleged if the Attorney General picks up and follows through with an investigation is an allegation that will immediately emerge that the Attorney General's investigation is politically motivated. Now, as we all know, the Attorney General will exercise his judgment independent of any political pressure. That's what we elect Attorney Generals to do in our state. And I think it's very important that we recognize that it's the Attorney General's responsibility to make a determination as to whether or not to follow through with the investigation. I think we should limit our remarks in referring this to the Attorney General to, we are aware of this letter, we are concerned by the allegations, and we encourage the Attorney General to determine what is true and to determine whether or not an investigation is in order, and stop there.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Other comments on this item? Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your work on this. And I know we both requested this be brought back, because I do think, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, that document really raises some very, very serious issues that need to be addressed. I don't feel strongly about the cover letter as much as I do about us taking a position to let the Attorney General know we want his office to look into this. So flexible for me personally, I don't know what others think on how the letter is worded. Happy to work with the mayor on edits, if that's what the council wants to refine a letter. But I strongly support our taking a position about these very serious allegations that impact everyone in Riverside County. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, and if the city clerk can just note for the minutes, and we'll correct the staff report, because councilmember Coors did request this item. And I support it, and I agree strongly, support the request by the ACLU to request an investigation from the Attorney General. I think in thinking through the cover letter, the purpose was to also add the impacts to the city of Palm Springs. So we don't have direct knowledge. We work with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department in our jails. Our police department works closely with them in transferring inmates. People who are arrested in Palm Springs go to Riverside County jails. So we very much have an interest in what happens in those jails, what happens to inmates, and then also how people are policed by the Sheriff's Department throughout our region. I think we have seen that significant concerns have been raised meriting an investigation by the Attorney General. The, I'm okay with Mayor Pro Tem's recommendation and happy to support that. The only addition of the cover letter is the impact of the sheriff's decision to refuse to enforce public health orders, to put out misinformation and even conspiracy theories about the COVID-19 pandemic, which has harmed our residents and created additional work for both us and our police department in responding to our public health orders and educating the public about responding to misinformation. So I think that was the benefit of the cover letter, is to request an investigation related to that and the impacts on the city. And then also the new information that Sheriff Bianco was a member of Oath Keepers, which is known to be an anti-government militia. And then now his refusal to denounce that membership and denounce that organization following what we now know is their involvement in the insurrection on the nation's capital. And that raises an issue, I think, for the city and our residents as well, as we heard from public comment. But I defer to the council here. If you want to issue one letter, it's always good to speak with one voice. And so I'm fine with your proposal, just noting for the record that there are additional impacts and are additional issues that we would like the Attorney General's office to investigate, not just the ACLU's allegations, too. So Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to make a motion?
My motion would be that we redraft the cover letter to include the things that you've just referenced and to state that we encourage strongly the Attorney General to follow up, to determine what's an appropriate investigation, and to come to a conclusion as to what the facts are, and that we greatly respect the independence and judgment of the Attorney General.
Thank you.
And that's doing that really fast on the fly. And I'm sure that everybody, whoever sits down to write this, will get it down much better than that.
Thank you. So I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item has been moved up. So that next item is 5C, discussion of a potential navigation center at 3589 McCarthy Road. So one, I'd like to note for city council, unfortunately, that my, I have a potential financial interest conflict here. City Attorney, help me out. My husband is a broker and has one of the parcels listed in here for sale. So I believe the city, I've talked to the city attorney about how I may legally participate. And I've asked Mayor Pro Tem Middleton to lead the entire conversation for this agenda item. So city attorney, could you explain for the public what I am legally able to do and how we can proceed in bifurcating the issue that I have a conflict on?
Yes, Mayor Holstich. It's my understanding that your spouse is a broker on one of the properties that is being considered as a possible location. As a result, you have what the FPPC would conclude is an economic interest in at least that one property. And so you would be able to participate in the discussion of the other property locations. But what that would require would be for the council to rule out and hear that one property in which you have a financial interest first. And then once that decision has been made by the rest of the council, you could return to the meeting room and participate in the discussion of the other locations. I should note that you would be entitled to listen to the staff report and the public comments, so that you could get the gist of those before you would have to remove yourself from the virtual dais while the rest of the council considers that one property.
Thank you very much. And so for the public and for the council, that one is 4775 East Ramone Road. It's option number three in the alternatives. So if I can, I will hand it over to Mayor Pro Tem to facilitate the meeting. We have done this a few times when council members have conflicts, for example, on one organization we're funding, and we might consider it separately. But I'll leave it up to the council to decide how you want to proceed. So we'll listen to the staff report, I'll remain, and then I will be removed from the meeting because of that conflict. And then you can decide how you want to proceed in considering that item separately, that option separately. And then if there is further discussion, I can participate as needed based on the city attorney's advice. So sorry, that's complicated. We have to work to make a living in Palm Springs, and sometimes this happens. So I appreciate everyone's help with this. So I'll kick it over to Mayor Pro Tem Middleton to start with the staff report, or asking for a staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think we all understand the dilemma and the caution that you're exercising. But we know how strongly you feel on issues of homelessness. And we want to ensure that your voice is heard as much as possible without creating a conflict for you. With that, we will move on to item 5C, a discussion of the potential navigation center at 3589 McCarthy Road. I'd like to begin by asking Greg Rodriguez, representing the county of Riverside, to provide a report to us.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And we're pulling up the presentation right now. Council staff, especially. My name's Greg Rodriguez. I'm not only a resident of Palm Springs, but I work for Supervisor Manuel Perez for the county. I'm also the chair of the county's continuum of care, and I'm subcontracted with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments for the collaborative approach on homelessness within the Coachella Valley. I am also a neighbor of this project. I just want to, I'm going to try and be brief, but I think you all know how crucial this issue is. I think we are at a precipice right now of a crisis here in the city and the western part of the valley, but also have a huge opportunity here with not only location, in my opinion, but also the abundance of political and community will, as well as possible financial resources to finally make something that many of us have been dreaming about for years become a reality. I also, too, want to commend staff, especially City Manager Justin Clifton and Jay Verrada for an absolutely incredible staff reports, one of the best staff reports I've seen on this issue in my years doing this work. I'm up here to give a little bit of a historical perspective on where we've come from, but additionally, how we've gotten to what I believe is a crucial decision to move forward tonight. And again, an exciting opportunity for the city in western part of Coachella Valley. I'll then turn it over to Jay Verrada from city staff to go over the particulars on the specific properties. I also, too, want to thank the council for the collaborative approach in the city, especially councilmember Coors and Mayor Holstich, who I have worked with for years, addressing the homeless issues in Palm Springs, and especially over the last two years in searching for this option of a navigation center. This has definitely not been an overnight decision. This has come through a lot of research, collaboration, and again, seizing on some opportunities that we see. Let me get this right here. There we go. So a little bit about where we've been. For decades now, the Coachella Valley, and specifically the eastern Coachella Valley, have been the primary shelter bed capacity for Riverside County. While CVRM, Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, and Martha's Village have primarily been shelters in the past, they do now operate on a full housing-first model. About a little over 12 years ago, I want to say now, under the leadership of former councilwoman Jenny Foat, this Coachella Valley Association of Governments, or CVAG, created their homeless committee. And that was primarily to address the concerns of the need for a shelter within the West Valley. At that time, they worked with Roy Wilson, who was a county supervisor at that time, to open Roy's Desert Resource Center. As many people know, that was north of the I-10. The location was a bit challenging. In the beginning, there was good intentions about how that was going to operate. But as many people know, due to lack of funding and the location, it ended up only being a place for people to sleep overnight. So people were bussed up there, or vanned up there from Sunrise Park and other locations for overnight, and then vanned back for the day. So it really didn't serve the needs that we needed. And again, at that time, shelters were really operating on a shelter model and not really utilizing the homeless first, or housing first, excuse me, and the wraparound services that we know are so much more effective today. In July, or I'm sorry, in the spring of 2017, literally a week after my boss was appointed to office, was the decision being made by the county in conjunction with CVAG to close Roy's. Again, this was due to some lack of funding, but again, just the inability for it to really serve the needs of the homelessness community in the western part of the valley. At this time, too, there was a national model that was proving quite successive, known as the Housing First Model. And so CVAG really started to approach the CV Housing First Model. And again, the city of Palm Springs was a great leader in this effort as well. Additionally, I just want to kind of highlight some of the efforts that have been done, primarily, first of all, by the city of Palm Springs. I want to emphasize, too, that where we're at tonight is not all that we've done, and that there have been a lot of, I'm going to use piecemeal, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but really good approaches as far, especially with the resources available, that were not available now in the past, to address these efforts. Palm Springs has been a leader on their budget allocations. They've dedicated public safety staff out of the police department for homelessness outreach and efforts. They have embedded with contracting with the county behavioral health teams. And I'll get into a couple other funding things that they've done recently, too, as well. We've also had an extremely valuable increase in the collaborative efforts in the Coachella Valley. So I, again, want to give a shout out to Justin Clifton, who over the past couple months has been convening various service partners, as well as county staff and other partners in addressing collaborative efforts on how we really look at a more comprehensive and direct approach on addressing these efforts. And then also the Riverside County efforts, it would behoove me not to mention some of the efforts we do. But again, in a collaborative way, have really been able to increase our funding levels, primarily thanks to Governor Newsom and the budget and some of the other allocative efforts that have happened, some of the ARPA money, American Recovery Act, sorry for acronyms, that are coming down. We have increased our behavioral outreach teams. You'll see a much more targeted effort at that. We've opened the new Palm Springs Community Health Center, which is going to have comprehensive behavioral health and substance use services that will be able to closely align with the navigation campus. And then also, again, our creation within the county over the last year and a half of our new department that has basically taken fragmented efforts over eight different departments amongst the county and created those under one in our homelessness, housing, and workforce solutions department. And then also, over the past year and a half, as the chair of the continuum of care and a member of the Board of Governance, we have, as the county, gone through extensive strategic action planning and excited about rolling out that action plan in January with a really focused look on regional and collaborative efforts that we've seen work very well here in the valley. And then just a little bit about what we've accomplished. Again, I'll mention the CV Housing First Program that then was brought in-house. We had originally contracted that out with a provider from Riverside, but brought that into CVAG at the beginning of this year in 2021. And we have already seen an amazing amount of success as far as really addressing the chronically homeless. The CV 200 basically addresses those members on our streets that are high utilizers of our public safety departments, as well as our hospital and emergency rooms. We work very closely with the city of Palm Springs and the police department. Captain Kovalov is a huge partner in this effort, as well as the rest of his staff, and helping to do outreach, especially around those troubled areas like Barista Park. We implemented as a county project room key. I want to thank, again, the city of Palm Springs and some of the hotels that jumped on board immediately. This was a program that launched in the beginning of the pandemic area to make sure we were protecting those on the streets from spreading the virus. It was highly successful in the fourth district here, and more so here in Palm Springs, where we actually have permanently placed over 90 individuals through that program. We, the city, as many of you know, has opened the boxing club as the access center. We were luckily to be able to use that boxing club over three years ago now, believe it or not, as an overnight shelter, when the county funded three shelters for two years, one in Palm Springs, one in Desert Hot Springs, and one in Cathedral City. Obviously, when COVID hit, we had to move that, one to the high school, and then eventually to the United Methodist Church. So again, you look at the collaborative efforts that we've done. And then, of course, the summer cooling shelters, that's actually what I was referencing, not the access center, but have been highly successful. And again, compliments to the collaborative efforts on that. I will highlight on both of these programs that what we have seen over the last three years, at every location that we've had, there has been no negative impact to the neighboring communities. Due to the operations, to the professional operators, both CVRM and Martha's, due to the collaborative efforts with the police department, and just the overall operations, we've actually have neighbors, you heard one tonight, that actually volunteer, that are happy to have these in their areas. We have not seen those areas. I would also highlight, too, as we move on and talk about navigation centers and what their impacts are in community, staff did a really good job on pointing out other localities within the state of California. But I can also say that through my research throughout the country is that these type of centers actually have more of a positive effect on local communities than they do on a negative effect. And then just overall valley provider success. And again, this just gets back to some of the collaborative efforts that we've done. And we really will be doing a collaborative effort on the navigation center, no matter where it will be located. So what we still need, and you know, as I mentioned, homelessness is not a one type of system fits all. It's a comprehensive approach. And as we've moved through these various success models, whether it's CV Housing First, or the cooling centers, or the access center, the services that our county staff provides, as well as our providers provide, we still know that there's one missing piece. And that's a West Valley Shelter Access, or a navigation center. It must use a housing-first model, because we know that that is a successful model. We've seen that not only in the valley, but statewide. We've seen that not only in the valley, but statewide and national statistics to prove that. We must have comprehensive wraparound services is one thing to put someone in a shelter bed or into a unit and not provide them with the necessary behavioral health treatment, substance use services, access to services, and eventually access to permanent housing. And then I talk a lot about throughput with housing choices, and what I'll outline in kind of the schematic design of the campuses, we're doing a relatively good job now, whether it's county, city staff, providers, about our outreach efforts, about our transitional housing ability, about case management. Can we get better on all of them? Of course. But where we really lack the throughput is our ability to get people into longer transitional housing and more important, permanent supportive housing. So, as I said when I began, we are at a critical juncture and I think have an absolute amazing opportunity right now to offer a site, I believe, is not only ideally located, but also is, has the ability to be up and running faster than any other property that is proposed tonight. Again, we've never been presented with the opportunity before to have resources for capital improvements, for the property acquisition, more importantly, for renovations, and then also the opportunities for operationalizing, or capitalizing, I'm sorry, for operational expenses. I'll get into some of the financial details at the end of the presentation. Again, I just think we have the political and community will. We have the funding streams available, and, again, a site that can get online sooner than later. So, I wanted to show a little bit of design, and I really want to emphasize, this is just an initial design of what the proposed location will be. This is a fluid design that we will work with, the city, I will say, will work with in partnership with the county, with the service provider, to really figure out what is going to be the ideal service requirements on this location. You'll see in the larger building at the top, left-hand portion is the Building C, which would be the primary shelter beds. These will be individual-type units, so it's not a congregate-as-much shelter. We're doing this, one, because a lot of homeless individuals will not go to a shelter because of the fear of being in a congregate setting, whether that is fear of molestation, or rape, or just mental health issues of not being around other people. But also, too, God forbid, if we were ever to get into another pandemic situation, this would be a very much more healthy and secure system. Obviously, within that building, you'll have the necessary facilities for that. And then off to the right, you'll see basically some proposed elements, such as a medical clinic, obviously, social services, behavioral health treatment, obviously cafeteria and kitchen setting, within that workforce development as well. A lot of what you see onsite, especially like the kitchen, food distribution, employment center, are options for actual workforce development within this site as well. We're looking at actual possible RV storage, and when I say storage, as we know that we are seeing more and more homeless individuals park their RVs out in the desert, and so this will provide somewhat of a transitional aspect for that. And then you'll see, pardon me, at kind of the middle-ish, left-hand side, again, very rough designs, but what is really important here is about not just getting people into a shelter immediately, but having some transitional units to transition them out, and one of the callers had mentioned this on. And this is what's unique about this site compared to other shelter-type facilities throughout the state or country, is what we're looking for, again, is what I talk about a lot about throughput. So, having that immediate access for the shelter system where law enforcement or discharges from hospitals have a place that we can provide a bed, but more importantly, having our case managers have a unit, a crisis stabilization unit, a transitional unit, whatever you want to call it, to transition those individuals out within two weeks to a month, and then they can remain there 30, 60, 90 days as we transition them into a more permanent supportive unit. The caller, one of the callers mentioned like a studio. So, again, looking at this whole holistic approach. Again, utilizing the Housing First Model and, again, really intense wraparound services. I just kind of want to talk about some of the funding mechanisms that I believe we have a really good opportunity on here, both for capital and operational. Not necessarily assigning allocation amounts to this, but the county will be coming in with the, some dollars from the American Recovery Act Plan that the supervisor received by a vote of the board last week, addition city contributions through their HAP funding. There is a new round of the Homeless Housing Assistance Program, Round Three coming out, that we will be looking for funding for. Project Home Key, many of you might remember that we did, were successful in getting an award last year by the state for Project Home Key, and that was for the Ivy Palm Project, and unfortunately, due to bankruptcy issues with that, that fell through. However, there are a lot less restrictions as far as the ability to use those funds. More importantly, there's a longer timeline than we had last time, so there's going to be a huge opportunity here in Project Home Key. I really want to emphasize, too, the next item about foundation and private contributions, and these really are going to play a vital role when we talk about ongoing operational costs. I, for long, have argued that I believe that if we had a vision like this, if we had a plan like this, that I know we have a very generous community here on the western end of the valley, and actually throughout the valley, that would be more than willing to contribute to this. I think the business community and the conversations I have had, I know that the mayor has had and Councilmember Coors have had, are not only supportive of this concept, but are willing to pony up, as we shall say. And then finally, I want to talk about the CalAim opportunities. For those who do not know, Medi-Cal is basically being renamed CalAim and will go into effect in January. And what we see here, again, these are for ongoing operational costs, is the ability now to bill through Medi-Cal or CalAim for supportive services. So, especially with a medical clinic onsite, whoever we would contract that with, whether it be somebody like a Borrego, DAP Health, or RUHS, the opportunities for us to be billing for behavioral health services, for substance use services, for actually housing services, it's really, really exciting about where we're being able to go through these. A lot of that will be managed through health plans, and for here locally, and the majority of our Medi-Cal recipients are on IEHP or Inland Empire Health Plan. So, you can see, we're just not thinking about what the structural and service side will be for a navigation campus in Palm Springs, but more importantly, we want to make sure that we can build this, that we can operate it, and that we can operate it in a sustainable manner. Just some next steps on this, before I turn it over to Jay, is obviously continued community engagement. Any concerns that arise, we want to make sure that we address and make sure that we're addressing those with factual information based on other operations, not only within the city of Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley, but throughout Riverside County. The city will probably, or some will be going out for a request for a proposal or an RFP for a provider. I believe we're looking at this, doing this sooner or later so that we can involve that provider within the final design and utilization of the site, so that we make sure we're building something that is not only usable, but more importantly, that is the best benefit to our homeless individuals. Obviously, design finalization, budget finalization, securing those fundee streams, we're already working on those as I speak, looking at how we expedite processes, not overcoming requirements that we need to do, but I think our goal here is to get something up and operating as quickly as we can in the most effective way as possible, and then, obviously, renovations and development. So, at this time, and I'm going to be happy to take questions at the end, again, I just want to thank the city for their leadership on this. It's been a real pleasure working, again, not only with city staff, but both with you, Councilmember Coors and Mayor Holstidge, over these past years to, I think you can tell my excitement to see something I think we've been dreaming about really come to reality, so I'm very excited about that. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Verrada.
Wonderful. Thank you, Greg. That's really great information. Counsel, when we were presented with this opportunity, we wanted to do some basic due diligence before moving forward, and that includes comparing the price of the property with other properties, understanding the cost to build it out, and how long it would take for each of these options, and the condition of the property. So, to answer some of these questions, we work with a local architect to provide input to help with the cost and timeframe. Our Development Services Department completed a Phase One environmental analysis and had staff from Building and Fire inspect the property, and it looked, we also looked at some alternative Next slide, please. Oh. Getting spoiled. Oh. All right. I hope you can see this. We searched for similar properties for sale, so industrial buildings, two acres or more, 10,000 square feet or more, and two properties came up. As you can see on the top section of the chart on the screen now, 4775 East Ramon and 1243 Gene Autry. And the average price per square foot for these properties is $136.23. The higher of the price properties was $162.50, that's on a per-square-foot basis, and the lower was $120. The subject property we're looking at is at $126. So, we are finding that this property is within the range of available industrial buildings that are on the market. We've also ordered an appraisal on the property, but that will not be complete for another few weeks. We've evaluated the cost of using vacant land sites also, which is, the property is listed on the bottom half of the slide, and we'll get into that discussion later. So, looking at the McCarthy site, 3589, you can see, as has been discussed, it has, it's a three-building campus and making it easier to divide it for multiple uses and multiple service providers. It's important to note that there are no tenants currently, and there is no need to buy out leases or relocate tenants. There is space to add tiny homes, and there is also space within a closed campus to enjoy outdoors, shielded from view, from the street and neighbors. The property at 4775 Ramon, I should note, my understanding and from the listings we have is currently under contract, so this is actually not considered a target site, but it is used for comparison purposes for, to make sure that the property on McCarthy is, the price being asked is within the range of properties on the market. And as we saw, this property is available and at $162.50 per square foot. You know, you can attribute that to many things, that it is higher than the McCarthy property, given its location near a key intersection in the city, has more exposure, and offers some other benefits in that regard. There's another property at 1243 Gene Autry, and this property is for sale now. Yes, it is at a lower price per square foot, however, it is smaller than the subject property at 28,000 square feet versus 46,760 square feet, but it also has 10 current tenants, and some of those leases for those tenants do not expire until 2026. So, this is actually more of an investment opportunity for someone who would want to come along and take advantage of the rents. So, there are potential additional costs to buy out the leases, provide relocation payments, pay loss of goodwill, and would take more time to negotiate an acquisition if it was desired to have those tenants leave. So, I just wanted to point that out, that this is sort of a challenge in that sense, and there's no certainty that the tenants would agree to leave early. So, for any of these buildings, the rehab cost to convert it into a shelter, a kitchen, would involve adding a commercial kitchen, indoor interior walls, new doors and new windows, at an estimated cost per square foot of $155. So, that is for an existing building. And I want to note also, the cost per square foot for creating a similar space on a vacant parcel is $377. And, again, we asked a local architect to price out the cost of the building new and rehabbing, and these are the results we got from them. So, while vacant land can be acquired for less than the land with the buildings, there is a development cost that increases the overall cost of the project, and this involves adding curbs, paving, sidewalks, and gutters, stormwater drainage or storage, which is now required onsite for new construction, concrete foundations and slabs, framing, and it also takes about twice as long to complete a new project on a vacant site. And I believe one of the callers indicated, you know, speed to market was, or speed to delivering the product is an important part of serving the unhoused population. But we did look at some of these vacant land sites just for comparison purposes, again, and the city owns this Gene Autry site. City, just south of the McCarthy property we are talking about is another open parcel that is currently on the market, and this is another site we had previously discussed when identifying sites for a drop-in center. This is just south of the airport runway on Ramon, across from Social Security Administration. And on El Cielo, just south of the Boxing Club, is this vacant lot that is also available. But as I've indicated, building new, similar and comparable building would be about $377 per square foot to construct, or for, or 15 million in total just for the building, for a similar building as what already exists on McCarthy. Adding in the cost of the land would bring a project to 16 or 17 million dollars total. And the time to build out from a new, a new building is 24 months, which is twice as long as renovating an existing building. Again, might be hard to see on this slide, but the McCarthy site's price per square foot is not the highest, it's not the lowest, but it is within the range of properties that are on the market, and the acquisition price of 5.9 million plus an estimated rehabilitation cost of 6.2 million would be a total cost on McCarthy site of 12.1 million dollars. As is shown in the table, you can see that 12.1 million with a 12-month timeframe is one of the quicker options, and the acquisition price is within a reasonable range of similar properties on the market. We also wanted to point out that this location is, in relation to other homeless services the city has been engaged with, is, you can see the McCarthy property is identified with a star in the upper right, towards the center of that map you see there. Hopefully, you can see that. And it's, you can see from there, other facilities the city has been engaged with, such as the overnight shelters at Demuth Park, the Boxing Club, the Methodist Church Overnight Shelter, which is winding down, where the Ivy Palm had been proposed on North Palm Canyon. You know, these are all a good distance away from the proposed site here, and, again, these are for the projects where the city assisted with homelessness. I do want to point out that the Chamber of Commerce and the Palm Springs Hotel Association have sent us support letters or indicated their support for pursuing a project at the McCarthy property, and we're available to answer your questions, and we also have the, our consultants from La Sare available to discuss some best practices in terms of providing homeless services. Thank you, counsel.
Jay and Greg, thank you both for an outstanding report. Are there any discussion or questions from City Council? Councilmember Coors?
Actually, I just wanted to raise the issue of if we're going to bifurcate one of the properties on Ramon, where Mayor Holstidge is recusing herself, we should probably do that before we ask any questions, so she can be put
Actually, I just wanted to raise the issue of if we're going to bifurcate one of the properties on Ramon, where Mayor Holstich is recusing herself, we should probably do that before we ask any questions, so she can be put in the room where she is not participating with our conversation.
All right. Then let's go ahead and, if there's no objection, take and have that discussion regarding the Ramon project, so that the mayor can return. So, are there questions that staff has regarding the Ramon location?
Go ahead, Councilmember Coors.
So, the Ramon location that has buildings on it, I don't know who the right person for this is. If it was to become available to buy again, how does that, how does that fit in? Does that property work? It looks like it's one big building versus some smaller ones. I just don't know the comparison. And I apologize, I didn't ask this first, but if we went, if we were able to get that property and it fell out of contract, how does it compare to the one on McCarthy as far as being a good site? I see it's smaller, I think it's 2.1 acres or 3.64 acres. Does that limit the number of modulators? I just want to get a sense of how these two properties would compare.
Councilman, yes, it is smaller. It would limit the number of modulators. The smaller building would limit the number of interior units that could be constructed. It is in a busier part of town, at the corner of Ramon and Jean Autry. It would occupy what could be a more valuable commercial space with, say, showroom and take advantage of that. So, that is something that, you know, I don't want to say sub-optimize the use of the property, but that, that may be a concern, and, and it costs more.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions regarding the Ramon location? If there is not, then I do have a couple of questions. I see Councilmember Garner. Please, go ahead.
Are we just doing questions, or?
You can either do questions or comments, but we are concentrating on the location at 4775 East Ramon right now.
Okay, great. Just, in terms of the location of the property, I just wanted to talk about that briefly. Because when you, when you look at it on the map, which helps me, it's really close to a lot of businesses, which part of why I say that is a good thing is because if you're going to be in transitional housing and getting services and eventually getting a job, you're close to a bunch of places that have readily available entry-level jobs, which I think is a really attractive thing. And so, so I just wanted to state that as one of the reasons that I think it's an attractive property, but I, I think the likelihood of it coming out of contract and all of that is probably pretty low, so I'm fine with setting it aside probably from our more general
Councilmember Woods, do you have any questions or comments on this? Okay. I do, I have a couple of questions then. The contract, or tentative contract that now exists, how, how secure is that? Is this, are we dealing with something that truly is moving forward, or is there some uncertain, reasonable uncertainty to whether or not this property is going to become available? And I know that asks for speculation, and staff hates to do that.
Well, Mayor Protem, we really looked at these properties to see what was on the market and compare the prices. It's just kind of noting that, well, this one is under contract, but we got the data on the price. We do not know the status of that contract, but we can, we might know somebody who does.
Okay. I, I think it would be worthwhile, before we walk away from any consideration of this, to have a sense of who is looking at the, at the property and, and what the certainty is of it moving forward. As Councilmember Garner said, from a location standpoint, it is a very busy street, but it's also a street that's on a bus route directly and has direct access within a matter of just a couple of blocks to a substantial, two substantial shopping centers. One, that includes General Market. So, this is, this is a location, if it were available, would be one that we would, it would seem, want to give some very serious consideration to. If it's not available, then it's just not available.
Mayor Protem, it's Greg. If I can add, kind of going back on Councilmember Coors, and just to address Councilmember Garner's question too, is, I think it's important, as we're going after funding streams for truly what we're calling a navigation center, the ability to have the land for some housing components, which that site would not have. As far as access to amenities like stores and workforce development, you know, again, the McCarthy property is close enough to bus line. It's really no further than what the Ivy Palm would have been, Michael's House, which operates around that area for years. Additionally, if you notice, not only our service providers within the valley here, but again, on these campus navigation models, an element of the workforce development that is built in is transportation, and making sure that people have access, whether that is not only through bus lines, but actually through van transportation through those centers as well.
Right. Do we have a sense of interest in terms of numbers of how many people we can house at one location versus the other, given the square footage differences?
You know, roughly right now, just based on the design of this, and if you take a comparable at least square footage, you're looking at probably 50 to 75 at least shelter beds. It's really hard until we get a real firm selection on what kind of design, whether it's a pod home or more of a manufactured-type structure that would be more, I believe, amenable. I don't want to sway this anyway, so I'll be careful on my language, on what the capacity would be. Obviously, we're looking at maximizing as much capacity as far as more on the housing side than creating too many shelter beds that we wouldn't have a demand for.
When you say 50 to 75, is that 50 to 75 additional total, or?
That would be like total shelter beds. And so, I want to distinguish that that would be the shelter aspect of it. And then, I mean, I, there have been a couple companies that have looked at this property as far as the vacant site that they could build modular-type structures on, depending on the height you go, the size of the unit. You could feasibly get 100 units on that property easily, if not even more.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Coors?
Right. And I don't know if this is for you, Greg, or Jay, or the consultant. So, on the Ramon property, it sounds like we could do similar shelter beds, but you may sound like we couldn't do any of the transitional housing, but I'm not sure if that's what you meant. So, can you just clarify? Like, what I'm trying to get a sense of is how many people can we do the transitional housing?
Correct.
When we say, decide whether or not we're going to say no on Ramon, that's, that's an important piece, is the transitional housing. To me, actually, that's the more important piece.
So, yeah. I, I wouldn't say we couldn't do any, but you would be severely limited on the number that you could do there. And I, I think the challenge with, and again, not to just negate any property outside of McCarthy, but the, the challenge is the design within that structure on Ramon, I believe, would be more costly, because you're going to have to do not only the shelter aspect of it, but with such on a site in McCarthy, or if you built from the ground, you've got the ability to utilize certain structures or build structures that have a more dedicated facility towards medical and wraparound services outside of the shelter concept, as well as separate cafeteria and all that. What you're trying to do is not create an environment where individuals that are transitioning out of the shelter feel uncomfortable about having to utilize services within that structure system, if that makes any sense.
Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. Sorry, Greg, I am just going to put it out there. I, I am finding that this whole presentation is really pushing the McCarthy site, and I, I really thought we were having a conversation about what the best site would be. I'm sorry, I just, I just need to state it, because I, I think it's something that the public is, is probably thinking too. I don't think it's just me. But, but in terms of, of this location that we're just, they're talking about right now, it's just across the way from the empty land that we're also discussing as an option. So, for me, that's another part of why this property were to be available, as Mayor Protem said, is attractive, because you literally can create the transitional housing right there across the street as an extension of this project, which is actually very similar to what is being proposed at the McCarthy site. There, the proposal is that there's land there that could potentially be purchased to build transitional housing on as well. So, I, I just think that there are a lot of opportunities here in terms of really having robust access to things, and social security is right here, and not, and not being so far away from so many of the services that, that we need. But again, like, it, it would be immensely helpful to know if this is, would actually be an option or not.
All right.
Yeah. And if I could just briefly, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Garner, you're exactly right that we did not spend as much time with conceptual layout and some of those things for this alternative, because we did not think it's available. So, it was really primarily used for comparative purposes, to try to put in context the parcel that we do, or the property that we do see as available. So, we could certainly get answers to the questions about whether it might become available, but we, we didn't study it as closely, because it did not appear to be an option. And, and still doesn't, until we learn that maybe it falls out of contract or something like that.
Thank you. Are there other questions, comments with regard to the Ramon site? If I could offer a suggestion to my colleagues that we ask staff to do the due diligence to determine whether or not the Ramon site is, is potentially viable in terms of coming back on to the market and report that back to us, but notwithstanding some reason to believe that this site is going to become available, that we move on from it.
Mayor Protem and Council, I do think we can do that. One of the things you might want to do, especially given some of the time constraints for the McCarthy property, is at the conclusion of this evening's conversation, you may consider tabling this item until the next meeting. So, ironically, because we have a meeting next week, the agenda materials are already going out for that meeting. But by tabling this, we would essentially amend that agenda on Monday morning, add this item again, and, and try to resolve that one issue, if, if that's in fact still in consideration at the end of this conversation.
Is that, is that something that works for everyone else? I see heads shaking. I don't think this is the appropriate time for, unless City Clerk or Attorney corrects me, for us to be voting on that, but I, I'm seeing some sense of consensus of that. All right. For the City Attorney, is it appropriate for us to bring the mayor back into the room and into the discussion as we now move forward away from 4775 East Ramon?
Yes, it would.
Madam Mayor, welcome back. Would you like to take over the discussion at this point?
If you want to proceed and lead this whole item, that would be great.
Madam Mayor, welcome back. All right. And I will go ahead and complete this one and be happy to give it back to you when we're finished. So, with that issue now set aside, let's move on to a further discussion regarding the other alternatives that we have before us. An existing building that would be refurbished versus, versus other sites that would be new construction. Are there questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Garner?
I mostly have comments, and I wanted to just share a little bit of, of information because, well, actually, pretty much all of the sites are in District 1, which I just wanted to put out there, which I don't, I don't think is a bad thing. I just wanted to be clear about that, because then my district boundaries can be a little bit difficult for people to, to know where things are. I, so I had a meeting on Monday with my residents. It was not intended to be about this, but much like happens when there's some big topic. It, of course, there's a lot of time spent on that. And overall, residents were, were very concerned about the location. Some of the, the comments are, are ones that I think were, I, I will, let me share with you the comments that I thought are relevant to us in this conversation, are most relevant to this conversation. One was that there was interest from residents of, that the city have an objective criteria in how we select a site for a navigation center, in similar vein that we do for CUPs or other things. And the reason this was brought up was because they said, you know, there's pushback no matter where you put something, but they were interested in being able to say, you know, objectively, here is really the best location, and this is why we're doing this here, which I thought was a really interesting thought and something worthy of mentioning. The other thing that was, was raised was just a concern about making sure that we were in contact with the Desert Healthcare District. So, I did reach out to the Desert Healthcare District, but it was obviously really short notice, so we haven't had a chance to have a, a larger conversation about this site. The, the Healthcare District just recently gave money to open a mobile health clinic in the Desert Highlands Gateway Estates neighborhood, because it, it doesn't have access to any medical care over there. So, I thought that was something that was worth also discussing. And then, just a few other notes that I, are a combination of things that residents said, and also just my experience. And for the record, I, I do live very close to this property, but I'm, I am well outside 1,000 feet of the location, which is why I can still participate on this. One of the things that was mentioned is the, the bus lines, and there is a bus line that is probably a 15-minute walk to the nearest bus stop on, on either side, but it is pretty slow. So, the bus, our sun line, I know we're working on it, but the sun lines comes about every 40 minutes at this, at this time. So, it is, it isn't that much. And I also just wanted to point out that there's one restaurant that's in walking distance. I know the staff report kind of made it sound like there were multiple, there's not. I wish there were, that would be great, but there's not. And so, we don't have a lot of resources that are, that are close by here. There's a lot of housing, but there's, there's just not a whole lot of, of other services in this area. And that was one of my, my biggest concerns. And so, while I, I like the idea that there's this building that we could rehab, and that there's empty land and all of that, my concern still remains with those other resources, with the difficulty in getting to a grocery store, the difficulty in getting to the Social Security Office, and then again, that transitional piece. If we're hoping that people will be able to transition out of homelessness and be able to start working, then I feel like they should be in very, very close, if not walking distance, to an abundance of jobs. And that's why I think the properties on, you know, Ramon and Jean Autry are so compelling because of their, people's ability to literally walk to, to a job and to the Social Security Office. The other part I wanted to mention about, about that is, shoot, now I'm forgetting it. Darn.
If I can interrupt, I'm so sorry. Councilmember Garner, since you are still talking in general, including the Ramon prod...
Oh, no, not that Ramon property.
Okay. I just want to be clear. I think I still feel uncomfortable that this is a general discussion. I think I still feel uncomfortable that this is a general discussion, and I'd like to be recused, just out of the abundance of caution, if I can.
Okay.
So City Attorney, do I have to be out of the Zoom room, or can I come, sit here off-screen and come in once it's not a general conversation?
If you're gonna recuse, I would, I would recommend just to step out of the Zoom room until, until this agenda item is, is over.
Can we just get some clarification, though? Because I thought we were gonna have a general discussion with the mayor. Because I'm not talking at all about the property that's recused.
Legally, we can. It's my understanding that she wants to do this in, in abundance of caution.
Okay. Okay, well, sorry, Mayor, I-
No, I'm so sorry. I want to participate. Since Council left, that other property just kind of didn't make a decision on it, and it's still under, as an option, I think I should not be part of the conversation right now.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I just, I, I'd like to have you involved, so, okay.
City, City Attorney, am I required to recuse right now?
I do not believe you're required to be recused right now.
Okay, thank you. Then I will stay at the request of my council and sit here.
Thank you for continuing to participate.
And, and yes, just, just to be abundantly clear, when I'm, when I say the Ramon property from, from this point forward, I, I am talking about that piece of empty land. I'm not talking about the other property. Thank you for, for making sure that I'm, I'm clear on that as well. I think, I think I'll just wait then on that because I know I did have another point that I, I kind of lost, and I've been talking for a long time anyway.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Gardner, and we will come back to you, I know. Other questions, comments? Councilmember Coors?
Sure, thank you. So a couple of things. One, I think finding a, a site that can be up and running faster is really important. We're in a true crisis moment. Whether, regardless of which one of those sites, or if there are others where there's buildings that we can get up and running, I, you know, in potentially a year versus two or three on vacant land, to me is just a high priority. I think our community feels the crisis, we all can feel the crisis, and the people who have no place to go feel the crisis. So very much understand, you know, wanting this to be in a place that has services, and this is where I could use some more help from sort of the experts on the timing if we did the vacant Ramon property, right? Is that in the same shape as Geanatri, where it's from scratch? Is that, I'm trying to just get a sense on, on these pieces. And then if we've done any outreach on the property on Geanatri, where there are leases, you know, whether there's the ability to talk to those tenants, have we done that? And then whether those locations are better for the reasons that make sense to me that Councilmember Gardner raised, then the McCarthy property, and I asked that other question earlier, how does the size factor in to be able to do the transitional housing with modular units or pallet homes or whatever it is, to get more people into actual transitional housing as soon as possible? I know that was a lot. I just could use some more information from the experts on those points. And I think we all could, and I think the public would appreciate that as well. I'm not sure who I'm asking that, so I'll ask the City Manager, who, who the best person to answer those questions is.
Yeah, I, I think we can, Jay can help provide some context. You know, when, when we saw locations, for instance, where there were current leases, we, we really didn't look into those because, again, they just don't appear to be available. So if, if council is interested in those, and just noting that, you know, dealing with multiple tenants with multiple leases, really objectively, that, that appears to me not available, at least not immediately, but, but maybe in the future. So we could go down the path of something like inquiring with each one of them if there were opportunities for buyout or, or something like that. But those kind of criteria to, to consider a property in that condition available may even open it up to, to others, but it, it seems a little more of a long shot, to be honest, than looking at, say, vacant parcels or, or parcels that are ready to build. So again, we just might want to get some clarification. That also, that kind of due diligence could take a little more time than just inquiring about properties that may or may not be under contract or something like that. So, you know, we can pursue some of that, but that's, that's probably the caveat.
Thank you. And then on, you know, and looking at having sort of the navigation centerpiece plus significant, you know, numbers of transitional housing, which we know are needed to get people actually off the streets. How much land do we have? So we have this, if we look at McCarthy, it's, right, 3.64 acres, I think, when I just looked at the staff report. And the design of it seems like we're using all the space. So I know we have our Geanatri property is bigger, some of these are smaller. Is that sort of a minimum amount of space we need? I'm just trying to get a sense as we're trying to compare these, because they're not really apples-to-apples properties. How much, how much acreage we think we need to do this right, to get the transitional units plus the medical services and the other pieces? So should we, are we looking at at least three acres, four acres, or is two acres enough? That's, that would be helpful. And how is that, where's the funding coming in, right? If we bifurcated this to just the navigation center, shelter beds without the housing, does that impact funding? I'm sorry, I just have a lot of questions in trying to make as much informed direction, I guess is what we're doing tonight, but decision is possible.
So Councilmember Coors, ideally, if, if to have the element of shelter beds, to have the wraparound services, and, you know, a sufficient amount of housing, you're probably looking at 3.5 to 4 acres at a minimum. I will tell you, as you look at funding streams of Home Key, HAP 3, the governor has made it very clear that in order, they, they will not fund just a shelter system, even if that includes wraparound services. There are no options for that. There has to be some element of housing when it comes to both Home Key and HAP.
Okay, thank you. That, that is helpful. And then staff, from a timing purpose of something with buildings and something without, such as our, the Geanatri property, just not to confuse vacant lands with, that are both on Ramon. I know we have a Geanatri property that's, I think, five-plus acres. So how long would that take versus, let's just say, the McCarthy for purpose of this discussion, or any site that has buildings that work?
So the estimated construction timeframe is 24 months, but since that particular property is when, is within the county's Airport Land Use Committee, we've been told that may add an additional two months. So a total timeframe for vacant Geanatri parcel is 26 months, whereas for the, the, the build-out timeframe for renovation rehab on, say, the McCarthy or other properties is 12 months. So it's, it's about half the timeframe.
And you have the cost outlaid, so I, I have that already. Okay, thank you. Those were my questions, Mayor Protam.
Other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Ah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gardner.
No worries. And I, I, I have too many comments, and I, I wish I was more like Mayor Protam, who is good about putting things down on paper first. One question that I had is kind of what is the best approach for reaching out to people who are in different circumstances, right? Like, we often, oftentimes when we get complaints or concerns from the city, it's about people who might have mental health issues or drug addiction issues and who are very visible on the street. We don't often hear people talking about, you know, families that are living in their car, which we also have in our city, right? So i- if someone can tell me who's a provider, are there different approaches for handling different, different types of people in different types of circumstances? And, and how does that work with a navigation center like this?
I'm sorry, just one minute while we try to get this mic live. One thing I'll add, as we're just working on getting that done, is, and this speaks to the size issue and especially some of the need to scale and possibly scale up, is that there is a relationship certainly with our ability to provide shelter and some of the other policies that we might have dealing with some of the secondary impact. So when it comes to, say, rules that might prohibit camping outside or something like that, I think the basis of the court precedent that limits some of those rules is not providing an alternative. So if we have sufficient space available, it does enable us to reach some of the populations that are perhaps more resistant and, and create an incentive, not only does it deal with some of the secondary impacts and prohibit some of the activity, but creates the incentive to move in the direction of services because really it might be one of the only alternatives left if you can have stricter rules for, you know, camping outside and, and collection and carrying of wares and things like that. And I'll turn it over to Greg to deal with more of the service provider element.
That's a great point. Justin, and I was gonna address that at the end of my comments, but, and, and I've had this conversation with Palm Springs Police Departments, is that they, there are people that they encounter that seem like are most hard to deal with, individuals that are homeless, but they don't want to go to Indio for a shelter aspect. So if we did have some element here in the city, some of them would use that. But more specifically, Councilmember Gardner, to answer your question, is there, you know, no one homeless person is the same, and everybody has their own unique situation, and I know you understand that. But to your point about, you know, the woman who is in a car with her kids, I, I can literally take you, I, or tell you, I take two to three calls of these personally every week. And that's in addition to SeVAC, to Martha's, to CVRM. And we find some of them housing, but we just don't have enough. And not necessarily the shelter beds, and I think that's what's great about a campus environment, is the ability for us to have some transitional units, whether those are the crisis stabilization units or more permanent supportive housing units. What's more important, though, there is almost every single homeless individual, whether it's someone in a car, chronic on the street with, with a grocery basket, couch surfing, they need some type of service, whether that's behavioral health services, substance use services, job development. And if you've got those services in a centralized location, our ability to manage more clients is much easier than if they're scattered about. Our ability to keep those clients engaged is far greater as well, when we know that they're literally only 500 feet away from our behavioral health office, or away from our medical clinic, or our workforce development. It's so much easier. You know, one of the largest staff costs for homeless services is case management. And I think we all know that in government, too, whether it's government or nonprofit, our highest cost are staff costs. So, so the more that we can, what do I want to say? The more that we can utilize one case manager for more cases, the less costly it is, but the more successful it is as well. I hope that kind of answered the question, so.
So, so there's, there's not necessarily a different way, it's just about having other resources available, which is fine. I just, I just wanted to understand if there was a multiple ways that we go about doing this.
And there are multiple ways. So I mean, I can list you probably at least six different programs within the county that will address either seniors, families, you know, domestic violence victims, and then obviously our service providers provide that, too. So there is a multiple of resources. I think where we lack, I don't think, I know where we lack in the western part of the valley, is the facility to do this. And, you know, even Justin and I, as I mentioned, you know, he's been convening these, I think once a month, Justin, or sometimes more than that, with partners. And we were really talking in our last meeting a few days ago about the need for what's being called, it's the new terminology now, which I really, really love, but it's called integrated service delivery. And it's about how are we really convening partners throughout the homeless spectrum? And that's government, nonprofit, business leaders in, but how do we not only just get together and talk about what the problems are, but how do we case manage individual people that we know of? So say Captain Kovalev brings me an individual, and how do we all sit around a table and work? What the beauty of having an actual campus environment, and again, I'm not picking one location, just overall campus environment, is that you've got actually a space that we can do that convening as partners, but more importantly, it's a space that we could have somebody that we all are working with, where that's two, three, four, or five agencies. But again, we have that access to that individual. That's some of the biggest challenges for homeless service providers, is that we may identify someone that's still not ready to go into full services, but we're engaged with them, but then sometimes we can't find them, and we'll lose them, and then they spiral further in, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I just wanted to understand that, you know, if there was a need for a different type of site for different types of people, that, that makes sense, so that's, that's clear for me. If I can continue, Mayor Protam?
Please.
Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to just raise up, because I, it was new to me, and I don't know how familiar others are, are with this program, is there's a program called True Evolution in Riverside, and it's actually focuses on the LGBTQ community and those living with HIV, but it, it also serves others as well, but that's kind of how it started. And I just saw a presentation on this, the Brothers of the Desert held it just a couple of days ago, and they're actually building a site that's very, pretty much a navigation center in, in Riverside. And one of the things that they were talking about was that access to services, right? They were like, the library is close by, the grocery store's across the street. They were talking about their site location, and, and the site location specifically was good because of these services that were nearby it already. And that was something that they really stressed. And it, it was quite the powerhouse of a presentation. I was truly blown away by the work that, that was being done there, and I would love for us to reach out as a, as a city to chat with him more. I think his name is Gabriel, and I'm, I'm blanking on his last name. But I did want to just put that out there for, for, for council members to, to look at. The other thing that I wanted to ask about is that extension of our property, of the property next to the boxing club. And one of the reasons that I'm also really pushing this conversation to be broader is, is because I feel like we, we, well, I, at least I would really like to see us do something that is innovative and good and, and really ticks off the boxes that we have. And so my question is, you know, do we have the ability to use that land that's next to the boxing club to set up, you know, the pallet homes or other kind of transitional spaces, an extension of this campus that we currently have, even though it's small, while we were to build a more permanent facility? And, and again, while I, I really value the idea of having this building that is already in existence, if we have another location that is closer to all of these different services, then I like the idea of being able to use that money to focus on that area instead of putting some money into this area and then later moving on to this other area down the line, especially if we have the ability to extend where we are right now. So just wanted to ask about that.
Councilmember Gardner, I'd need to turn to Jay or possibly Greg to talk about sources of funding and how they might be applied, but with that piece of the conversation notwithstanding, I do think we have the ability to implement, you know, short-term, temporary, bridge-type programs. So there, there aren't many limitations to that other than, of course, total cost, right? So anything that we do for a year or two that, that we roll up at the end of that year or two is, is funds that, that don't continue to work for us long-term. And, and again, probably want to be thoughtful about what sources might be available for those kinds of facilities, but we do have the opportunity to look at bridge-type solutions in the event that we're on an expedited path to build a navigation center or one that might take a little longer.
Can I add that, on to that, Justin, and that, and I'm familiar with the True Evolution Project, Councilwoman Gardner, and it is amazing- amazing project. How they were able to qualify for Home Key funding and other funding is because they had structures on there that they were able to rehabilitate. They weren't going from the ground up. Ideally, I agree with you. If we had all those amenities, it would be ideal. I don't think we're talking about amenities that are too far away. Additionally, I think, I don't think, as we see projects like the Miralon, as we see maybe Skyview come in, as we see more affordable housing projects in the area, you're going to have a greater density of population, which is going to attract more of those amenities that haven't been coming in because they've done the studies that there's not enough population. So I do see that coming down the road. I really want to emphasize, too, about where we're at when it comes to funding. And one, new build is twice as much as what it will be to renovate. Two, it takes twice as long, and under Home Key, HAP, we have timelines that we have to meet as far as when that money has to be spent down. And I almost would, and Mitch from LaSar may be able to help me on this, but I would almost guarantee you, a new build from the ground up, I will not be able to get Home Key funding from. It really has to be some type of rehabilitation slash modular-type product.
Councilmember Gardner, is that your comments and questions for now?
Yes, actually, Greg, can you clarify when you said a modular? Because I thought that at one point, there was a presentation that was done that talked about putting a modular building for the navigation center on the Gene Autry properties. Can you clarify?
Yeah. And unfortunately, that company is no longer doing that. I think they were a little, I don't want to use the word aggressive, I think a little hopeful in what they could be able to accomplish, and did not have the capacity to do that. With that being said, though, especially because they were looking at really building a large structure, where if you look at the real successful modular companies now that are doing either your transitional units or permanent supportive housing units, whether that's container renovations or actual modular, I've visited a couple of these manufacturers in Southern California, and so there are companies that can do that. But on a grander building like that, there are companies that can do that, but your timeline and your costs are greater. But for the individual housing, the nice thing about those is they would qualify under a Home Key because there's like an eight-to-10-month timeframe that you have to get something built and then somebody into.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I mention this is because at one point, and again, I don't remember when this presentation was, there was discussion about how it was, using these new modular materials are sturdier and fire-resistant and wind-resistant and go up faster. And so I'm just curious about, if there's Home Key funding for doing a project like that, that would actually cut down our cost, why not do that? But is that, so is that not an option anymore?
No, absolutely not. And I would argue that should be an option for the transitional and permanent supportive housing units on whatever site you would choose, because they are available, they are very safe, they're easily to construct off-site, your ability to do infrastructure to them is relatively easier than, say, a stick build. So I absolutely agree that that should be an element of this, wherever that would be.
Okay, so then if we were to do that type of build on a vacant lot, would we be able to get Home Key funding?
I believe so. And what I would envision, Councilwoman Gardner, is that this project, basically, you would look at it in much of a phased approach. It doesn't mean that you can't go on dual tracks, but say you've got a building, no matter where it's located, that you would do the renovation part for the shelter wraparound services, I think we can proceed with that quicker, could actually probably qualify for some Home Key funding for that, as long as we're planning a housing element side to that. But then again, is go after, in a concurrent phase or slightly delayed phase, Home Key funding for a manufactured-type housing site. And ideally, again, everything's about scoring when you're applying and competing for funding. And so if you can co-locate especially transitional units and maybe a few permanent units close to that navigation center, your scoring is going to be much better when it comes to the competitive nature. I think that's, I don't think, I know for a fact, that's why True Evolution was so successful in getting not only Home Key funding, but I believe they got some ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant, sorry for the acronym again, funding as well on that, because of the co-location area.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor Protem.
And Mayor Protem, and Council, if I could, we have gotten some information, staff's been made aware that the property at 4775 Ramone Road has fallen out of escrow, so it does appear that it may be available. The caveat for this evening's conversation is still that we haven't performed a lot of due diligence at that location, thinking that it was not available. So I think still it's probably a good idea for Council to be a little more exhaustive in looking at the other sites and directing staff to do any follow-up due diligence. And that could include, of course, looking a little more closely at that location.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Woods? Did I go up?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just for those in the public that have gotten a little bit lost, I think the fundamental question, the first question is, do we want a navigation campus in the city of Palm Springs? And two years ago, when I first came on council, Barbara Poppy basically directed us that that in transitional housing was something that we wanted and something we should spend our money on, the grant that we got. And I also believe, just in listening to the council overall, that the council and the community both are in support of a navigation campus here in the city of Palm Springs. So with that in mind, we, as a city, were offered an opportunity to purchase a particular site, and that was on McCarthy Road. And before we went any further, it was I that said we needed to investigate all our opportunities before we just put all our eggs in one basket, what are our opportunities that are out there? And that's exactly what this staff report is doing. The staff report is saying, you've got all these opportunities besides the opportunity that was given to you upfront. But when we make this decision, we're really talking about, there's several factors that I think I've heard council and myself will be looking at. One is the speed and timing by which something can actually happen. Another one is the money and funding, that's both for the capital improvement, the purchase, the capital improvement, and the long-term operation. So it was great to hear the county say about Cal AIN and the opportunity to use Medi-Cal money to pay for some of it. We're also looking at a location where it's near services and whatnot. So I think what we found out is there's some money available, there's some funding. Maybe there's still a little gap to be filled, but on the particular site that was mentioned, that we were offered the opportunity on McCarthy, there is funding available. It offers good speed and good timing, if that's what we indeed want. And its location is not the best compared to some of the other sites, but it's fairly good. My first choice was always the lot on Gene Autry behind the Home Depot Center, behind Aldi Food. And that had always been my choice for the last two years. However, I wasn't offered this opportunity that we have before us on McCarthy Road. So it kind of throws a little wrench into that, because we probably can't build out the site on Gene Autry in a cost-effective, speedy manner, and it seems to be better, closer to location services. So that's kind of where I'm landing with the whole thing. And it's not cost-effective to do that site. So that site is out of the question when you do comparative analysis on it. But I think we definitely do want this. I think a lot of the discussion that we've had are on some of the reasons we need it, why we need it, how it would operate. And I think all of us are in agreement that we do. So I think tonight, we really have to provide direction on, do we want to pursue the opportunity that was before us, or do we want more information on some of the alternatives, and should we limit some of those alternatives to a few, so staff is not overwhelmed if we continue the conversation between now and next week?
All right, thank you. Councilmember Coors?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do think that, I appreciate, Councilmember Woods, there was that fundamental question, do we want a navigation center? And I fully support a navigation center with transitional housing. My inclination is, and I really appreciate all the work staff has done, and Greg, you have done, to really get such a thorough staff report and presentation. I think what, for me, would be the best way forward would be to look at the Ramone property that is now available, that wasn't, we didn't know was available, and the McCarthy property, and bring those back as to, right, how many people can, can we do transitional housing? What the cost would be, what the funding that's available from the state and county in addition to the $3 million we set aside for this kind of project for the Ivy Palm and we held? And really get that analysis, looking at the services. There are going to be pros and cons to both, but I think if that worked for staff to get, to limit it to those two, in my view, I think, given the cost issues and the timing issues, I think we should do something that we can do quickly at a price point that we can do. And as far as the Gene Autry property, which I've always shared wanting to do something on, I think really going out to affordable housing developers who can get federal matching grants and all of that, if we donate the land to that, will also get us more affordable housing that we'll need as people transition out of other things that we need, worker housing in our city desperately. And I'd like to see that site used, the Gene Autry site used for that kind of housing, and really go out and try and talk to all the affordable housing developers about potentially doing that. And if that takes a couple of years, that's what they take. We know that from the Monarch, that's been five years from the groundbreaking that happened today. But I do think the two sites, and now that we have a second site, that have pros and cons, and really getting that analysis and bring that back. And I don't know if next Thursday is doable, or we need to have a special meeting, given the time considerations we have on one of them, that we don't get that input from the city manager, if that's where council leans to be, but that would be my recommendation, that we actually now get a little more analysis on the Ramone property, given that wasn't done understandably because it was in contract at the time. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I would second that, if that was a motion.
Sure. I don't know if we need a motion or direction, but you're right, I'm good with.
Yeah. If I could ask just a couple of questions, I think we are getting close to a resolution on this. The site at McCarthy, as I understood it, had the potential of perhaps being up to 100 beds or being able to accommodate 100 people. Is that correct?
So that would be very tight as far as shelter beds go. I think depending on the layout of the housing, that's more of the 100 number I was getting there, I think you're looking at, in order, we have to be careful again, too, because of the funding streams here on congregate versus non-congregate shelter. Again, we're looking at really, what is the easiest way to get somebody into services? And a lot of congregant shelter-type settings people are afraid of, especially when it comes to women. And we have a lot of senior women and even middle-aged women that are on our streets. So you're probably looking at about, I would say realistically, probably 50 to 75 beds. Keep in mind, too, is we are having a little bit of element of some family-type elements in there, too, so that we can accommodate that. But then on the housing structure, and again, Mayor Protem Middleton, it really depends on your layout and your structure.
Yeah. And if I could, just briefly, certainly we can try to go back even in the span of a week and try to not really accomplish conceptual level of design work, but try to work with numbers for space. The one thing that will just be what it is, is it really is worth emphasizing, again, the difference between a two-acre parcel and a three, more than three-and-a-half-acre parcel. And when you look at the conceptual layout of the three-and-a-half-acre parcel, it takes advantage of some of that space, not only for some of those modular or pod-type units, but for some of the other amenities that we think are needed now and perhaps in the future. So playground space, childcare is a key component to certainly the operation of Martha's Village and Kitchen at the facility in Indio. So it's not to say that it couldn't work, but if we're thinking about the needs now, and we've occupied a good, almost all of that three-and-a-half-acre space at a conceptual level, and any other kind of growth or any other collaboration opportunities for other services, like we've talked about behavioral health or similar, that's just a pretty significant difference between the two parcels and their ability to serve as a kind of co-located service campus center-type environment. So we will go back and look at the numbers, but we will always be looking at two acres versus 3.6, and that's just going to really limit the opportunities at the Ramone site.
Thank you. Thank you, and I get that, and I appreciate that. My next question following that, though, is, do we have any sense of how many beds we actually need in Palm Springs?
That's a million-dollar question.
I thought it may be, but...
You know, I think the best way to look at this, Mayor Protem, is to look at what the demand level has been over the last three summers, I think is a good barometer of that. When we did the boxing club, we started about 40, 45 beds. We really roughly, overall, just in my numbers, and Jay may be able to correct me on this, but it's really been an average of about 35 to 40, they're kind of full-time. I think there is a higher demand if you had a different facility is the thing. And obviously, if you're looking at a 24-hour operation instead of just a place to lay your head at night, if you engage people more. I don't want to get too much on a tangent here, but the county has a really, really good, when it comes to substance use program, peer-to-peer program. And what you're seeing is facilities like Martha's and CVRM are taking that kind of model and using that in homeless services. So if we get somebody through this type of system, you get those people into employment out on a peer-to-peer structure, I believe you attract more people. I would go back, too, is that there is a big challenge for law enforcement here that does not have a facility. So I think our throughput would be greater. It's just really hard, depending, to put a real solid number, because the Councilwoman Gardner's point, too, is it's just every situation is so different. Someone may only need it for two nights, where someone may need it for longer. I know that was a long-winded answer to that question, but...
I'm going to try to give a pretty short answer to what I think I heard. We're not quite sure what the demand is going to be, and all of us would be abundantly thrilled if one facility was adequate to cover what the demand is. But we don't know that that's going to be the case, so money is, we don't have unlimited resources, but no matter what we do, we're doing our best to hope we are addressing the demand with whatever facility we build first. Question for City Manager and City Attorney, do we need a motion and a vote to concentrate on two locations and have you come back and make a presentation, or do we just simply table this for further discussion? Is one, and two, how much time do you need to be able to come back and give us a thorough review of the two sites?
So I think direction is sufficient, but to the extent that that direction is specific and limits some of our analysis, that is helpful, because I do think we want to be expeditious. The opportunity, at least at the McCarthy property, is not one that is guaranteed to last forever. So if the city were to assume the current purchase contract, we're really dealing with a clock issue. There may be some opportunities to extend that, but again, that would likely come at a cost. So I think one way or the other, we'd be looking to bring you any information we can get by next Thursday, just to facilitate that as best we can. And then if we still didn't have enough, we would extend. By the time we get into December, given what we would want to do for public outreach and process from there, it starts to get more and more difficult for the McCarthy site, and we risk losing that opportunity, which isn't the end of the world if council's not confident in moving forward with that. But just want to be honest about that. And then I think Jay might have a little bit more information to address a previous question.
We do have a report from September from the Palm Springs Access Center, where it was reported that 247 unduplicated individuals were served. So that might lend to the total number of beds needed. I would also add, our last point-in-time count was 187 individuals.
Thank you, that really helps. So, City Attorney, do we table this discussion, or do we need to take a vote? discussion, or do we need to take a vote?
You do not need to take a vote, if you give us general direction to continue this to the November 4th meeting, again, as the city manager indicated, with some, maybe some direction as to which properties, that would be sufficient.
Okay. Is the, Councilmember Woods?
You know, a lot of arrows seem to be pointing towards the McCarthy property when we look at the criteria that we're trying to base it on, especially if we want an ambitious program that's going to serve the, the population that we have and any future population. The only concern I have about any, any alternative that we take, but particularly the McCarthy property, because we have to enter into escrow relatively quickly, is that there is a funding gap still, that still exists, and I would want to know how we would fulfill that funding gap, or what opportunities there are before we go into escrow, if that was the chosen property.
I think that's a very valid question and a very valid issue. So, is there...
Mayor Protem?
Please.
If I could make a quick announcement, for those who are watching on Channel 17, there appears to be interruption. You can watch our live broadcast on our website, www.palmspringsca.gov/pscTV, or on our YouTube channel. Thank you.
So, is there anyone who wants to argue that we should be looking at sites other than the McCarthy and the Ramone site for refurbishing at this point? Go ahead, Councilmember Garner.
I wanted to raise this because, again, another resident raised this, and I thought it was such a good idea, but I hear there might be issues. The Desert Sun building. Truly, I mean, it's huge, and it's in a great location.
I had not thought of that, that, that is a potential.
I think it's the price. I think, you know, when you look at the, I think, if I remember reading the Desert Sun article on the building, was a high price point. I think probably double what we're looking at, but we can...
No, it's, it's listed for, it's listed for the same as the other properties.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah.
I thought it was like double, I thought, when I read the article.
No, but I hear there might be logistical issues, but if it's something that we can at least assess, that would be amazing.
Daph, what's the capacity to assess that, that property?
To be honest, I think we're going to be somewhat limited in, in assessing a number of parcels, at least in a timely fashion. What council really may need to decide in the course of the next couple of meetings is whether or not you think the McCarthy parcel has enough potential to pursue. If not, I think what that means is we likely lose the opportunity, at least to assume the current purchase contract, and at that point, the, the good news is, we have more time. The bad news is, we may lose an opportunity that in many ways, when staff discovered it, really does seem ideal. That's not to say there aren't others, but, but the consequence of being exhaustive and really wanting to have greater assurance that we have the absolute right site would be that we may lose an opportunity. That, that's just the reality of, of real estate regardless, so I think we can bring you anything we can at the very next meeting, and the one after that, November 4th and November 18th. By the time we get that far, we probably either have enough confidence to move forward with one of those, or we're taking our time to, to vet the others.
Councilmember Coors.
Great, thank you. I know the Councilmember Garner is right, it was on the market initially for that, and someone bought it, I don't know if they've done work, but they put it on as far as September 3rd for 12.9 million, but are also considering keeping it and leasing it since it's half office and half warehouse, so. Now, if they bought it for five or six million and they're trying to sell it for 13, they may take an offer for less, of course, but just wanted to share that. But it was on for that initially as well. That's what I had remembered, too, that it was on for a lower price. But now it's, according to the Desert Sun, September 3rd, it's 12.9.
So, do we have consensus to ask staff to come back to us next Thursday with a report on the 4775 East Ramone site for refurbishing and the 3589 McCarthy site for refurbishing, and give us as much comparison as they can of the potentials of both of those sites, and we will then make a decision potentially next Thursday evening?
I'm good with that.
You see two heads, two heads shaking? Three? Okay. Then, staff, do you have the direction you need to allow us to table this for conclusion, hopefully next Thursday evening?
Yes, we will do the best we can in the short timeframe to bring you as much information as, as we can get.
That sounds wonderful. We've been at this for a while, it's 10 to 9. Can we take a 10-minute break till 9:00 PM and allow the mayor then to return and take over?
We'll come back from recess. Get started. Thank you to Mayor Pro Tem for leading that last item when I was recused. Very much appreciate it. So we're at nine o'clock. So we will go to public comment next, but I'd just like to discuss the order of the agenda and check in with council since it's 9:00 PM. We have a number of public hearings left and then also legislative items. So I might propose that we, I mean, we can proceed through the public comment and then do public hearings and see where we're at. But I would propose that we at least bump the discussion of the Climate Action Plan to the next meeting, if not any others that are not time sensitive. Probably also the ethics ordinance is that so city staff, do you need direction now from council? Boo. Which items might be bumped if we have staff sitting on the line waiting? What's your preference?
I think to the extent you're ready to make that decision, it is probably even more than staff or any other stakeholders that might want to participate, say, in the Climate Action Plan to make that decision now. And I will just add that our agenda is lighter next week. And so for items that can just carry over and ultimately be continued, we should have time to get to them.
Thank you. I think we should at least do that for the Climate Action Plan item. Councilmember Garner?
I support that.
I think we have time on the next agenda and we can move things. I think that's helpful. So we can get closer to ending at 10:00 PM as we try to do, but don't succeed in doing. So if we have the ability to do it by moving some things that aren't time sensitive and staff is good with, we should just move them.
Thank you. So can we agree to move the item 3A introduction of an ordinance for the Public Integrity Ordinance and then item 5B for the Climate Action Plan? We have consensus there? Okay, sounds like we have consensus. Thank you. And then we will reassess as we get through the public hearing. So the next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. City clerk, if you could please begin contacting speakers by telephone.
Brad Anderson, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. I'm sorry. I'm getting a lot of feedback. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancho Mirage. And yeah, this is very disturbing, but I wanted to talk about public participation in your meetings. The, yeah, I got a bad line, I guess. But well, I just want to say that you have events or city council meetings that you can hold in the convention center, other big forums. So this AB 361 that you're abiding by tonight is, I don't know, smoke and mirrors are on a cart because you can adapt your city council and city staff to this social distancing thing, which has kind of been debunked anyway. And see, because I can honestly say AB 361 has been abused this evening, and it's a good law, but it's been abused by the city because you're not abiding by it. My understanding that you had interruption in your TV channel or something tonight. And under AB 361, the meeting needs to stop. So you need to list that items and even the call in process of the meeting that you have is not up to AB 361 standards, meaning that a third party, yes, but the city, no, meaning I should be able to participate live in this meeting without pre-registering. And I can't, I can't participate live without you calling me. So anyway, and vector control district, just so you're aware, there are sterilized mosquito release program where they're thinking about it. And they have a new abatement policy with, I'm the only one apparently that knows about all this stuff. But you should really have your trustee report to your city, especially since you, last year, you had the screen event. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Hoben, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the Palm Springs city staff. My name is Bruce Hoben. I am the co-founder and currently sit on the board for the vacation rental owners and neighbors of Palm Springs, also known as the Iran. I am here tonight during general comments to ask for your consideration to move the Vacation Rental Compliance Code officers currently in the police department back to the Office of Special Programs where they originated. If you will remember in 2016, for those of you who are around, the city passed by resolution, a new permitting fee that increased the fees to $900 at the time. This was done to establish what was then known as the Vacation Rental Compliance Department, or now known as the Office of Special Programs. In 2019, during the finance and budget meetings, the budget contained a move for personnel from the Office of Special Programs to the police department. We understand there was a desire that the compliance officers have some type of policing power. However, the numbers of times this has been needed are extremely rare and extraordinary. The Iran believes, as well as some other members of the community who do not appreciate vacation levels, that code enforcement needs to be moved back. We are requesting council, please either put this as an agenda item on an upcoming meeting, or provide guidance from the council to the city manager to make this happen. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Mayor, we were able to reach everybody for public comment, and that concludes public comment for this evening. Thank you.
We'll always do this when people allege that we are not following state law and holding our meetings because we take that very seriously. City Attorney, if you could just respond if we're following AB 361 and public meeting laws in this meeting?
Yes, certainly. As soon as staff became aware of a potential glitch in one of the multiple ways of live streaming our meeting, we checked and made an announcement to the public of the other two ways of viewing them electronically. And so that complies with AB 361. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. I know you also take your role in making sure the city follows public access rules very seriously, too. So thank you for responding to that.
Madam Mayor, if I could also add to the statement of being able to provide live public comment, we did amend our first page of the agenda to provide instructions that people can call the city clerk's office at 760-323-8204 at any time during the city council meeting and add themselves back to the speaker queue. So before a public hearing or public comment period is over, they can continue to call the city clerk's office and we will add them to our queue. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Appreciate your work trying to make these meetings as accessible as possible. And I think you've really gone above and beyond to do so. Our next item is item 2A, a review of action taken by the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit application by Kings Garden for expansion of an existing cannabis cultivation facility for approximately 38,000 square feet to a 212,000 square foot facility and an associated 5,650 square foot warehouse located at 63795 19th Avenue. If we can have a staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and members of council, as you'll recall, this item was discussed by the city council back in July, and it's relative to calling forward an action by the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit for the expansion of a cannabis cultivation facility. At your meeting on July the 22nd, you did not take any action on the item and you requested that staff follow up on the following two issues. Number one, you requested additional environmental or SEQA review. And then secondly, you also wanted the issues relative to the applicant's ANZA road facility addressed. In terms of the SEQA analysis that was done, we engaged the city's SEQA consultant to do additional review based on information provided by the Sustainability Commission and looking at the actual bills from the existing facility. We do have the city's SEQA consultant here with us this evening, and I will call her forward after I finish my presentation to have her give you a little bit more information about the research that she has done. One of the things that will assist in this discussion is the applicant back in September via email agreed to use 100% carbon energy, carbon-free energy sources for the facility. And so that will assist with any environmental impacts relative to the expansion of the facility. We are proposing that if you take action on this item tonight, that the following additional conditions be included. And these are also in the conditions of approval that are in your packet this evening. The first condition is that the applicant shall purchase 100% carbon-free power for the 19th Avenue facility, the facility in question that's being expanded. Secondly, the odor control measures at the ANZA facility shall be installed and functioning prior to the issuance of any building permits for the expansion of the 19th Avenue facility. And that also recurring inspections of the ANZA facility be conducted by an independent third party until the odor issues are resolved. Again, these conditions are in your packet in the conditions of approval that are included with that. So that concludes my presentation. I'd like to call Ms. Nicole Christ forward to give a brief summary of the study that she has done on greenhouse gases at the facility. Ms. Christ.
Thank you, Flynn. Members of council, we, at your request, we looked at the research papers we were provided as well as information from Mr. Friedman with the Sustainability Commission. We redid the greenhouse gas analysis. By far, the largest GHG generator at a cannabis cultivation facility is energy production, which is not local production of GHGs, but is still GHG production. The analysis was done two different ways, using two different models, as outlined in our memorandum that's attached to your staff report, with the use of the renewables. The project remains less than significant in terms of GHG generation per the SCA QMD model. But in addition to that, will reduce its GHG emissions considerably by using renewable energy rather than traditional energy sources. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for the staff reports. Are there any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Horace?
Yeah, I just want to make, just so we're clear. So the agreement and the condition is that they use 100% carbon-free power, not renewable. Is that correct? Just because you used the term renewable, that we're talking about 100% carbon-free power?
Yes, that is the way that we've worded the condition and the condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions for staff? Councilmember Woods and then Councilmember Garner.
Has the applicant agreed to the additional conditions?
As I had indicated, there is a September email from the applicant indicating that they are willing to use 100% carbon-free power. We also have the applicant available, as this is a public hearing, to speak to you this evening, and he can offer his testimony on the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner?
Can you just tell us the timeline of when the odor controls at the current project will be completed?
In speaking with Veronica from our Special Programs Compliance, she had indicated that in their discussions, it appears that late January or early February, we should have the ANZA facility fully compliant.
Other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to provide their testimony, and the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City clerk, if you could please begin.
I believe the applicant's going to be joining via Zoom. He's trying to connect now.
Thank you. Welcome. You're live with the city council and you have five minutes to provide your testimony in this public hearing.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Holstich, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, council members. Thank you for the opportunity of letting us be here tonight with you. My name is Gary LaSalle, and I'm the Vice President of Operations for Kings Garden. Per our last hearing, I'm here to provide you with an update on our project. Based on the conditions that was presented to you, yes, we have agreed to commit to use 100% carbon-free energy through the city's DCE program. The odor control is being at our other facility to just kind of answer that. It is being worked on as of right now. We're actually anticipating a completion date no later than January 15. We have been in touch with Veronica, keeping her updated on the progress that we've been doing. It is scheduled through our harvests of each room, and the last room being completed is on 1/3. Once that's done, the city's odor control consultant from 1500 Inc. will be out here to commission the system. They will also certify the system, which is something new for the city of Palm Springs, through their ACOM Performance Verified Cannabis Cultivation Company. This will be the first within the city and is going to be their gold standard for other facilities to model. Our new project that we're completing now will have the same type of systems included in that as well. Again, going through all of the conditions that we've agreed upon, we feel that we have been able to come to an agreement with the city and work together on this to where it meets both of our goals in getting this project moving forward. And I again appreciate you having us here tonight. I want to thank Veronica, Edward, and Rick in the city and all their staff in order to help get us to this point. They've been extremely instrumental up till now. And I'm here for any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. So we will now move to public comments. City clerk, if you could contact public comment speakers.
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment. We had one person, but they withdrew.
Thank you. So City Clerk, does the applicant get a rebuttal if you would like?
If you would like.
Applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal to no public comment if you would like to use it.
I'm good at this time.
Thank you. So there being no other speakers, that public hearing is now closed. Is there, are there any additional questions for the applicant from council members? Councilmember Garner?
Can I make, I don't know, it's kind of question comment? Is that okay?
Yeah, we don't have to separate it. We're allowed to deliberate now that the public hearing is over. I just thought for the interest of time, we could do that. But yes, feel free to make any comments or questions you'd like.
Okay, thank you. The reason I just wanted to bring up, I appreciate you having the timeline for the odor, sorry, the odor mitigation. sorry, the odor mitigation, and that it's going to be done fairly soon. I mean, it's only, January is only a few months away. But I did want to just raise that I'm still getting emails from surrounding businesses about concerns about odor, and I just wanted to raise that for you, Mr. LaSalle, because I know that they're very concerned, and you know, I'm making sure to let them know about the timeline and that things are going to be improving. But that's something that maybe you all want to consider is to talk to some of the surrounding business owners about what's going on. Obviously, that's not a condition that we're going to impose on you, but I just wanted to raise that because I got, I was contacted just earlier this week. So I'm going to put that out there for you.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from Councilmember? Councilmember Woods?
If there's no other comments or question, I would move staff recommendation. It appears that staff and the applicant have worked tediously on making the recommendation that's before us.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I would just say to the applicant, thank you so much for caring about the impacts of your business on our desert environment, on our entire community, thinking through how to make this a cleaner and greener project. We very much appreciate you making those investments because we are all paying for it on the back end either way. So thank you very much for agreeing to do this work with us.
Very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Can we roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here tonight with us.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You too. The next Thompson Hotel add four additional guest rooms for a total of 168 guest rooms located at 414 North Palm Canyon Drive. If we can have a staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and Members of Council, you may recall that just a few months ago, we processed an amendment to the development plans for the Thompson Hotel, increasing the guest room count from 150 rooms to 164 rooms, and also making some minor additions and changes to the southeast corner of the hotel. In doing some additional design work, the applicant has discovered that they would like to add four additional hotel rooms. Unfortunately, this does require them to go back through the process of obtaining Planning Commission review and City Council approval for these additional guest rooms. For some reason, my PowerPoint is not advancing. There we go. So in terms of the location of the guest rooms that is being changed out, it's in the center of the site, as you can see here on the image on the screen. And so there won't be any changes that you'll notice on the exterior of the building. In addition, because the project has more parking spaces than are required by code, they have more than sufficient parking to accommodate the addition of the guest rooms. What is happening relative to this particular area is when we did the amendment back in June of this year, the applicant had moved the fitness room to that location and also to meeting rooms. And what they're proposing to do is to just change that back into four guest rooms. With the fitness area and the spa, that will be relocated to the ground floor space of the hotel, which had originally been intended as a retail space. The spa and the fitness center will now be available not only to hotel guests, but also to the general public. And so it will have an entrance from Palm Canyon, and we believe that having the spa and fitness facilities there by making them available to the public will also energize the Palm Canyon frontage of the hotel and make it a successful facility. And so again, there are no impacts in terms of the exterior of the building. It is parked appropriately, and staff and the Planning Commission both support this change. The Planning Commission did discuss this item last night at the Planning Commission meeting and voted five to zero to approve the item. With that, Madam Mayor, that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. And then the applicant is also available to answer any questions and is here for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. And this is a question that's somewhat off the issue of the additional rooms. But do we have an estimate now as to when construction will be resuming and when will construction be complete in this hotel opening?
The applicant does have an active building permit for the site, and as they testified at Planning Commission last night, they are there on the site and are doing some work currently. The revised drawings for the southeast corner, the changes to the southeast corner of the hotel are in the permitting stage. We are doing, I believe, the final check on those and should be able to issue the permit for that section of the hotel here within the next week or two. And so they are at the point, and the applicant can go into further detail in terms of their construction schedule and their plans. But they do have an active building permit currently.
Okay, very good. And I did see a truck coming out of there the other day. It was, it was really neat to see somebody actually there working.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other questions for city staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to provide their testimony, and then the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, if you could, please bring in the applicant. Hello, welcome. You're now live with the Palm Springs City Council and our public and staff who are here with us as well. If you could please introduce yourself, and then you have five minutes to speak on this public hearing item.
Well, thank you, Mayor Holstich and members of City Council for reviewing this. Staff did a great job introducing us. My name is Alex Kessimer. I'm with Hall Group. Also on the call, we have Brandon Dedman with S&amp;S, and then our President for Hall Group, Don Braun, who will be speaking a little bit after me. As shown on the documents that staff relayed, with our recent changes in the last amendment, we had a discussion of putting some functions down to the spa. And with that, we have started discussions with an operator that is, or that to the public as a public amenity on top of a hotel amenity, and then go back to the original design for Building A, which increases the four rooms. To achieve this, we didn't remove any key functions of the hotel. We moved some back-of-house space throughout Level 1 and up to Level 2, and that created the room that we needed for the spa and fitness retail. So our ask as staff relayed to you is just to go back to the original design with the four rooms. And with that, I'll let Don Braun come in and talk about the update for our construction's opening.
Yeah, thanks, Alex. Mayor Holstich and Councilmembers, I don't have a long agenda here. I just really wanted to, you know, come, I knew we were coming before you on the four-room addition request, but also just wanted to be available to address questions. I know that, you know, the question was asked by Councilmember Woods about the start. You know, we have commenced the site to be reactivated. Scaffolding is going up to start to repair the exterior plaster. Scaffolding and other interior means are going forward with to get everything ready to re, to sort of reignite the site. So, you know, there's still, you know, I would say we have started construction, but sometimes, again, you see these things sort of build a little bit slowly just from a public viewpoint because of the amount of work involved just to make sure that everything, you know, is back up to full repair. So, you know, our expectation is the hotel will be completed for the winter season of '22, '23. So, you know, we would love to open this in December of next year. I don't want to come before you and say that, you know, we, it's for a certain, we're certainly our internal goal, and that's our hope. But we do feel confident we'll be, we'll be open within the '22, '23 winter season.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add? City Clerk, how many minutes are we at?
We have two minutes left.
Thank you. Would you like to use the two minutes remaining for your applicant time?
No, I know it's been a long council meeting. So, you know, if there are no more questions, I can tell you, we are diligently working on this and, you know, abiding by the things that we talked to Council before about.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, are there any public speakers for this public hearing?
Madam Mayor, we have no other public comments for this item.
Thank you. So the applicant is invited to provide a rebuttal for up to two minutes if you would like to use it.
I, again, we'll pass on that. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. So this now would be an opportunity for City Council to ask questions of the applicant, make a motion, or provide further discussion. Councilmember Woods?
I think we're all relatively happy to see you working at the site. And we're just pleased that something is moving forward and continues to progress without anything. But I see no problem with adding the rooms. The Planning Commission saw no problem with adding the rooms. I think those rooms were originally there and taken out, if I remember correctly, way back when. So I would move the item into staff recommendation.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Coors?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here this evening and for your work, your investment in this project, and for getting it under construction. We appreciate it. We're looking forward to the opening, 2022, 2023.
Thank you for your support. Look forward to seeing you all again. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Yep.
The next item is Item 2C, consideration of an appeal requesting that the City Council overturn the decision of the Planning Commission to approve a major architectural application to construct a new 5,846-square-foot residence and a 576-square-foot detached casita with rooftop deck on a hillside lot located at 585 Camino Calidad. If we can have a staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and Members of Council, this is
I have to, I have to go first.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Councilmember Garner has to recuse on this item, so we will put her in a Zoom room, and then we will do the staff report.
For financial reasons, I still have to recuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor and Members of Council, continuing with the staff report. This item is an appeal of the approval of a single-family home in a hillside area. The Planning Commission reviewed the application and approved it on September 1st. The appellant then filed an appeal shortly thereafter. In terms of the proposal, the house, as has been indicated, is approximately 5,800 square feet, and then it also has a detached 576-square-foot casita on the site. In a hillside area, it does have a garage that is excavated below the principal floor of the residence. And you can see the elevations here on the left, and then the site plan and floor plan on the right here on the screen. In terms of the appeal that was filed, I'm going to summarize it by identifying three primary issues. The appellant and his attorney are here this evening and will be able to go into additional detail. But summarizing the issues, number one is relative to the underground garage, and also related to that, the building pad height. Secondly, there is a concern about the rooftop deck. And then third, there is a concern about the scale and the size of the residence. Let me just go through those issues individually. In terms of an underground garage, it is permitted in the city of Palm Springs to have basements, including basement garages, provided that at least 50% is below grade. Also, the applicant is requesting that they have a garage and a music room that would be located below the main floor of the dwelling. The applicant is also requesting a pad height on the site of 529 feet above sea level. This is relevant, as I'll go into the next drawing showing you how that relates to the adjacent houses. Ultimately, the Planning Commission requested that the applicant lower the pad height in order to address some of the concerns that were cited in the Planning Commission meeting relative to the overall impact of the home. In terms of underground garages, we do have quite a number of them around the city, primarily in our hillside areas, just as it makes sense there in terms of the differences in the grade in accommodating a garage on the site, although there is at least one instance of an underground garage in a non-hillside area, as you look at the lower left. In terms of the underground garage, this is a section through the residence. The street is on the left-hand side. The garage is under the living area there. It's more or less relatively level with the top of curb. As recommended by the Planning Commission, however, this would be decreased two feet lower, and so that would reduce the overall impact of the residence relative to the adjacent neighbor. In terms of the pad height, we did have the applicant's architect go through several iterations showing what the pad height would do relative to the adjacent houses. The original proposal by the architect is at the top of this drawing, showing a pad height of 529 feet. The middle is the, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, which is kind of in between two different variety, two different options that we looked at. And so the middle one is at 527 feet, and then was also recommended by engineering that we look at 525 feet. But the, the middle is the one that was recommended by the Planning Commission, and it probably mediates best the elimination or the removal of soil from the site in terms of excavation and the impacts that that would cause on the neighborhood relative to the scale of the residence and the property that is to the north that is somewhat lower in terms of its pad height. Next, going into the issue of the rooftop deck. The zoning code does permit rooftop decks. However, it's subject to a number of conditions. Number one, that they cannot have a roof. Number two, they must conform to the height envelope, and that includes any railings or any stairs. And number three, they cannot be habitable or they cannot be conditioned space or enclosed. The rooftop deck, as proposed, does conform to code requirements. The question is raised in the appellant's letter is whether or not roof decks are permitted. Again, they are permitted by code. We have a rather famous example in the Kaufman House, built in 1947, which does have a rooftop deck. We have more recent examples, the Tuscan Heights development up at the top of Racket Club Road. Nearly half of the residences in that development have rooftop decks. We also have examples elsewhere in the city, such as this one at the lower left in Movie Colony East. The best rooftop decks are ones that you don't even know are there, and so that's certainly something we encourage in terms of our regulations. Relative to the applicant's proposal, the rooftop deck is located on the casita on the south end of the site. The casita itself is slightly depressed relative to the principal residence, and so that helps to lower the height of the rooftop deck. Based on the comments at Planning Commission, the architect has proposed to locate translucent glass on the south and west sides of the rooftop deck in order to eliminate any sightlines to adjacent properties. As you look here in this illustration, there is a yellow line with an arrow showing the rooftop deck in relationship to its views and the neighbor to the right, the appellant. rooftop deck in relationship to its views and the neighbor to the right, the appellant. Based on the sightline provided by this arrow and the position of the principal residence, anyone who is occupying the rooftop deck should not be able to see into the appellant's yard. The architect has also proposed to extend that translucent glass to a portion of the north side, right around the staircase, so that any views that may be possible to the appellant's yard would be further curtailed. Moving on to the scale and the size of the residence, in the appellant's letter, it does note that there are a few residences in the neighborhood that are larger than this one, but the majority of the residences in the neighborhood are smaller. In terms of staff, we did take a look around the neighborhood in terms of the square footage of adjacent residences. We do concur with the opinion of the appellant that it is one of the larger residences in the neighborhood. However, it does conform to our lot coverage requirements and our setback requirements. In fact, looking at the lot coverage requirements, there is a maximum of 35% lot coverage. This residence, as designed, covers 23% of the lot, so it's well within the maximum lot coverage requirements. So, while it is larger than many of the residences in the neighborhood, it does conform to our code requirements, and staff and the planning commission felt that it was appropriate in terms of its size and scale. Ultimately, our recommendations are as follows relative to this appeal. Number one, regarding the pad height, staff feels that maintaining the pad height at 527 feet helps to mitigate some of the concerns of the appellant while not going to the extreme of requiring a lot of excavation to lower the residence. Secondly, the appellant, in terms of talking about the underground garage and a concern about the number of spaces in the garage, cited that they have concerns that this residence may have a need for additional parking spaces. One of the things I've discussed with the project architect is the possibility of adding an additional surface parking space. I would like the architect to speak to that if they are able to accommodate that. And then, the third point, as suggested by the project architect, is to add partial glass screening on the north side of the rooftop deck in order to address the appellant's concerns about sightlines and noise relative to the rooftop deck. That concludes my presentation to you. I'm happy to answer any questions about this proposed dwelling and the action of the planning commission. As I've indicated, the appellant is available and will be on Zoom, as well as the architect for the property owner, and they will also participate in public comment this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much for the staff report. Are there questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant and then the appellant will each have up to five minutes to provide their testimony, and then the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, if you could please invite the applicant to provide their testimony. Good evening. Welcome. You're live with the city council and the public. If you could please introduce yourself, and then you have up to five minutes to provide your testimony in this public hearing. Please begin.
Bruce, could you clarify? Do you represent the applicant or appellant?
The appellant.
Okay. If you could give us one minute, we're trying to bring in the applicant. Madam Mayor, that is the applicant, the architect.
Thank you. Welcome. If you could please introduce yourself, and you have up to five minutes to provide your testimony in this public hearing. Please begin.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Lance O'Donnell. As a local architect, I've had the great fortune to work with clients like Chad and Tenna Dyer. The Dyers contacted me late last year, and we're excited and proud owners of a new vacant lot at 585 Camino Calidad. Having completed nearly two.
All right, go ahead.
Lance, is there a problem? Hello, Lance? Can you hear us? Hello, Lance?
Lance, you're muted. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. There's a delay in my presentation.
Okay, so you can try to sign on and sign off again. You could try to take off your camera, though you have a right to be here and be seen. Sometimes that helps at the beginning. City Clerk, if you have other recommendations for the applicant?
I agree. It's to turn off your camera. Usually, that improves your internet quality, and you can provide your comments.
Yes, I can. I can hear everybody speaking.
And we can hear you, and I didn't hear any delay for your presentation. So, if you can, so we will give you, we'll restart over, and you have five minutes.
Lance, are you there? We are waiting, and.
Yes, I am here.
Can you please present your presentation?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lance O'Donnell. As a local architect, I've had the great pleasure to work with many clients like Chad and Tenna Dyer. The Dyers contacted me late last year, and we're proud owners of a new vacant lot.
City Clerk, do we need to take a break while we work with the applicant to resolve his technical issues? Let's take a five-minute break.
That would be great. Thank you.
Mr. O'Donnell, you have five minutes. Please begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lance O'Donnell. As a local architect, I have the great fortune to work with many clients like Chad and Tenna Dyer. The Dyers contacted me late last year, and we're the proud owners of 585 Camino Calidad. Having completed nearly two dozen hillside homes in the city of Palm Springs since opening my Palm Springs-based architectural practice in 1994, I take great pride to have thoughtful clients like the Dyers. And the Dyers and the process becomes one of a team effort through the design, approval, and construction process. We understand the need for and value community involvement. In all the years that I've been practicing in Palm Springs, I've known five planning directors, countless engineering, planning, building, and safety staff. However, one guiding document has remained largely unchanged, the city's zoning code and with it, the hillside ordinance. The reading, the reason this guiding document has stood the test of time, in my opinion, is its consistency, fairness, and its balanced approach to planning. Also key to the hillside ordinance and success is the city's longstanding public review process. This includes dedicated design professionals on the Architectural Advisory Committee, now Architectural Review Board, and the city's Planning Commission. The Architectural Advisory Committee reviewed the Camino Calidad project and voted unanimously to approve. Further to the AAC's approval was the planning commission's two reviews of the project, first to request additional exhibits, and second, giving the project unanimous approval. Having personally spent 10 years on the Architectural Advisory Committee, I know that it takes dedication and commitment, and all AAC members and planning commission members give their time and talent solely for the betterment. It takes dedication of our community, and all AAC members, planning commission members, long-established contributors.
Can you please mute yourselves when you're not speaking? You're interrupting the applicant. Thank you. Applicant, if you could please begin, continue. So, Mr. Howard Hyman, please mute your line. Thank you. Applicant, I'm so sorry, Mr. O'Donnell, you could please continue.
I'll back up just slightly. The planning commission first requested at the first meeting additional exhibits, and after requesting additional exhibits at the second meeting, voted unanimously to approve the project. Having personally spent over 10 years on the Architectural Advisory Committee, I know the dedication it takes for the Architectural Advisory Committee members and planning commission, and they give their time and talent solely for the betterment of our community. Given the city's established and rigorous review process, I respectfully request that the commission uphold the planning department's recommendation to deny Mr. Hyman's appeal. On a couple of things that planning director mentioned, there was one error. The total square footage for the home, home plus casita, is 5,846 square feet. And of the three items that he said we would take under consideration to investigate additional parking, we have, we are, garage is set back over 30 feet, and with a typical city parking stall, we can fit four cars in our driveway with plenty of room. So, we know that the driveway fits four cars. The garage has two cars. We can get six cars on the property, and we hope that that allays Mr. Hyman's concerns for parking. As to the additional privacy screen at the rooftop deck, we would, yeah, we would gladly install that additional portion to forestall any views to and from Mr. Hyman's property to the rooftop deck, so we would gladly do that. I don't really recall what the third item was, but none of them seem to honor it, and we would undertake any of those if requested. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for Mr. Thank you so much, Mr. O'Donnell, and we apologize for the technical difficulties and also the interruption there. Thank you very much. So, next, the appellant has up to five minutes to provide their testimony. If you could please introduce yourself and begin. I think this is Mr. Bauer. Welcome.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you very much, Mayor Holstage, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, city council members, city manager, and city staff. I want to especially thank the city staff, who's been very welcoming and very agreeable to meeting with us regarding our various concerns. My name is Bruce Bauer, and I'm the attorney for Howard Hyman. He's the appellant here. He resides, along with his family, at 525 Camino Calidad, which is just north of the proposed project. Mr. Hyman appeals from the September 1 Planning Commission decision to approve this 5,846-square-foot single-family residence, along with a 576-square-foot casita and a 250-foot rooftop deck, a total, then, of 6,672 square feet at 585 Camino Calidad. This is an appeal and approved home project. The city council is urged to carefully consider this project. While there are instances where differing items of this project have been accepted and approved in the.
time that he's agreed to put a translucent glass on the north side of that deck, which we would agree is necessary. For no other reason, we need that for sound attenuation. So, if we can have the similar sized glass, translucent glass on the north side, we are agreeable to that. The project as proposed should not be approved, since it grants applicants all of their wish items, and the adjoining homeowners, especially our client, are stuck within an inordinate burden for both of its construction scale and ongoing burden. Taken together, these requests are unprecedented in the city. And while the applicant can cite rare examples, rare examples, instances where some or more of these features are allowed in the city, there are no residents in the city that allow, that we're aware of that allowed all of these features taken together.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes.
That's your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. So, next, the next City Clerk, we move to public speakers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
Yes, we do. We have one.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the public speaker didn't want to continue. However, I do have a written comment as an accommodation, given the late hour. I'm going to go ahead and read it. This is from, I'm sorry, Sidney Williams. "I would like to speak in support of the Lance O'Donnell Dyer residence located at 525 Camino Calidad. We are fortunate in Palm Springs to have outstanding architects who are designing exceptional commercial and residential projects, and Lance is one of this select group. He is well aware of our architectural legacy of excellence and strives to further that tradition. As a fourth-generation resident of the Coachella Valley, Lance understands the climate and the environment and designs with this knowledge in mind. I'm familiar with his many projects over more than 20-year period, and I'm always impressed by the creative, or I'm sorry, by the variety of creative solutions he achieves. A recipient of several AIA awards, Lance designed for the Dyer residence will surely receive that level of recognition. Moreover, as an architect-designed project, it will enhance the neighborhood and will likely increase the value of the surrounding homes. Both the Planning Commission and the AAC approve this project unanimously, and their expert judgment should be upheld. Since Lance is inexperienced in building in Palm Springs, is familiar with zoning laws, building codes, and the requirements of building on a hillside lot, I applaud his design and urge you to reject the appellant's appeal. Thank you for your consideration." And, Madam Mayor, that concludes the public comment.
Thank you, and we apologize to the public for the late hour, and appreciate, City Clerk, you making that accommodation, which we are always happy to make, to read those comments out loud if it is too late for folks. So, next, the appellant will have two minutes for rebuttal, if you so choose, and then the applicant will have two minutes for final rebuttal, if they choose. Is that correct, City Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Appellant, if you please begin.
Yes, I mean, we do not take any exception with respect to the architect's work. He's a talented architect. There's no question. We aren't impugning the architect, as the prior speaker suggested. Rather, the applicant itself is seeking, is what you would expect often from an applicant. They want to emphasize the value of their property by building it as densely as possible. Now, that only helps the applicant. Now, in terms of my client, the appellant, who sits to the north of them, they're going to be shut out. They've requested a variance of two feet in connection with the build-out of this project. They're going to be shut out for the rest of the time they purchase this property and anyone who purchases it from that view. So, I urge you to reconsider the project, the skies and scope, and everything taken together. The request that we're making that they reduce the height of the house by two feet is a reasonable one. And while the Planning Commission did vote unanimously, there was definitely contention, the height issue was definitely a contentious issue.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bauer. Does that complete your comments?
It does.
Thank you. So, now, Mr. O'Donnell, as the applicant, you have two minutes for rebuttal, if you so choose.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to correct some inaccuracies. Again, the total square footage of the Dyer residence is 5,846 square feet. The way the definition of square footage is calculated, it does not calculate decks, palios, rooftop decks in that calculation. The total open space for this project is 23, or the total built area is 23%. It's exactly the same open space as Mr. Hyman's residence at 23%. It's specious to say that the density, bulk, and other things for this project are exceeding the neighborhood. We're at 23% open space on this. Mr. Howard Hyman, on the record, said that he has no views to the south. His views are to the west and north. It's in his public testimony. So, I'm flummoxed at the continued assertion that this home is larger than any other home in the neighborhood, and additionally, no variances were sought for height. There's a typical process, which is the administrative minor modification that was used for a height at a minimum setback. But that same process was used on Mr. Hyman's house and the house to the south of the Dyer's. So, it's a process that's used every day, and no variances were sought, and the height of the home is in perfect keeping with accepted city standards. So, yeah, again, we're seeking approval of the very diligent process that the city goes through, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Does that complete your comments?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for participating and for all of the comment that we've received. City Clerk, are there any additional speakers?
No other speakers.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. So, moving to City Council, is there any discussion or additional questions for the council, from the council? Councilmember Coors?
Great, thank you. One question for the City Attorney, just so I'm clear, because the issue of the square footage of the casita or accessory dwelling unit came up. My understanding, based on current law, is even if that wasn't built now, it's just sort of an over-the-counter to get those under state law and city law now after the fact, right?
Yes. Councilmember Coors, under current California law, accessory dwelling units, as long as they meet the requirements of the local ordinance, would be approved ministerially. And so, this, while it's called a casita, presumably would meet the requirements of that ADU ordinance and would be able to be approved ministerially, even if just the primary house were built initially.
Thanks. And I just want to disclose, since it's a public hearing, that Councilmember Woods and I, at the request of Mr. O'Donnell, did have a virtual presentation from him about the house and what happened with the Planning Commission. We did not provide any comments or ask any questions. We just listened, but I did want to share that with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coors. Any other questions from council members or discussion or direction?
Madam Mayor, I did get a notice from Mr. Rahim, who did register earlier. I think we recorded his phone number wrong. Would you be open to opening the public hearing again and taking this comment?
Yes, please. Thank you. So, if we reopen the public hearing and take this additional comment, does the applicant and the appellant have an additional rebuttal?
I would recommend maybe two minutes each, yes.
Thank you. So, in the interest of a full public process, we will reopen the public hearing, and we will invite the public speaker to begin.
John Rahim, you're live at the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members and Mayor Holstage. My name is John Ram. I was the former Planning Director of the City of San Francisco for 12 years until my retirement last year, and I'm now a resident of Palm Springs, which I truly love. I think Palm Springs is one of the few cities that was built largely in the 20th century that has a strong sense of place, and I think that has very much to do with the architectural legacy of the city. And in my opinion, this project continues to continue that legacy. I just would like to make three brief points. One is that the project appears to need to meet all code requirements. I don't need to go into details. You've heard that. But I have reviewed the drawings and the documents submitted by both the applicant and the appellant, and I believe all code requirements are actually met. Second, the design is very consistent with the aesthetic in that neighborhood and with the overall design aesthetic of Palm Springs. I'm familiar with Lance's work, and I think he really understands the design content. I would also say frankly that lowering the garage is actually a design benefit of the project, which should be embraced by the neighborhood rather than having the garage be front and center as it is in many projects. Thirdly, I think most importantly, I urge you not to set a precedent to support and appeal of this type of project. In my 30 years of work as a city planner, I found that it's quite common and understandable for neighbors to want less bulk and size than the code might allow, and for builders and developers to want more. For me, it is important to say no to both. The code has to mean something. I understand that there is often room for interpretation, and codes are complicated, but the basics are important to uphold, so that everyone is playing by the same set of rules. If each project becomes a separate negotiation, there is no basis for agreement and can be, frankly, become very chaotic. And frankly, that was my experience in San Francisco, where a lot of individual negotiation has led to far too many cases where the loudest or most powerful voices win. I strongly urge you not to go in that direction. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I admire your perseverance on this very long meeting. I know you have difficult decisions on these matters, and I just want to thank you for your service and willingness to do what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, thank you for taking that public comment, and that does conclude.
Thank you. So, we will go to the appellant, who has up to two minutes to provide a rebuttal again, and the applicant, who has up to two minutes to provide a rebuttal again. Mr. Bauer?
Sorry about that. Yeah, so while the Speaker made the point that this was in keeping with the development of that particular area in that neighborhood, well, none of the instances that we've been provided of subterranean parking or rooftop decks are in that neighborhood. So, that point cannot be true. Neither of those instances are allowed in that, or we've seen in that neighborhood. Most of those instances that you see are developed property that have been developed many years ago. So, that point just is not valid. And it's certainly within the right of the appellant to seek and be concerned about development next to them without being deemed NIMBY or that being objectionable. There's development, as I indicated, behind Mr. Hyman, and he hasn't objected to that development at all. This development is a horse of a different color, and that's why the city should be concerned, because it's, in total, it's bringing different elements together that is not present in any project that we are aware of or anyone cited to us that has and absorbs all of those elements. And certainly within the height, there is discretion with the city to determine what the height should be allowed, be permitted in the setting as this. And so, it's not an unreasonable request, given everything that we've asked, that that be reduced by two feet. Now, there is additional cost associated with the applicant, and we understand that the builders don't want to and the applicants don't want to absorb those costs. But those costs are temporary. The loss of a view and the scale and scope of a house next to you is permanent and everlasting. With that, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, would you like to use two minutes of rebuttal time?
Yes, I would, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Again, the project's open space is 23% of the entire site. We can accommodate the parking that on-site. We are not requesting any variances. My client's property is approximately five feet above the adjacent property and approximately three feet below the property above that to the south. So, the property is in keeping with the street-side progression of heights along the street. And then further, the overall height of my client's home is, even given the additional five feet of elevation and pad height, is only 18 inches above the neighbor to the south. So, the bulk and mass of the Dyer residence is entirely in keeping with the streetscape. The tuck-under parking that we're utilizing is a very valid approach to reducing bulk and creating a streetscape that is pleasant. There are many, we counted 10 projects in a quarter-mile radius with the same tuck-under parking we're utilizing. So, again, we feel this is a perfectly suitable project for the community, one that will be hopefully celebrated in the future. And yeah, we're looking forward to your approval tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comments?
It does.
Thank you. So, we will now close the public comment, public hearing. Thank you for everyone bearing with us there, as we did that twice to allow for public comment. So, City Council, discussion or questions? Councilmember Woods?
behind Mr. Hyman, and he hasn't objected to that development at all. This development is a horse of a different color, and that's why the city should be concerned, because it's in total, it's bringing different elements together that is not present in any project that we are aware of or anyone cited to us that has and absorbs all of those elements. And certainly within the height, there is discretion with the city to determine what the height should be allowed, permitted in the setting as this. And so, it's not an unreasonable request, given everything that we've asked, that that be reduced by two feet. Now, there is additional cost associated with the applicant, and we understand that the builders don't want to and the applicants don't want to absorb those costs. But those costs are temporary. The loss of a view and the scale and scope of a house next to you is permanent and everlasting. With that, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell, would you like to use two minutes of rebuttal time?
Yes, I would, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Again, the project's open space is 23% of the entire site. We can accommodate the parking that on-site. We are not requesting any variances of our... My client's property is approximately five feet above the adjacent property and approximately three feet below the property above that to the south. So, the property is in keeping with the street-side progression of heights along the street. And then further, the overall height of my client's home is, even given the additional five feet of elevation and pad height, is only 18 inches above the neighbor to the south. So, the bulk and mass of the dire residence is entirely in keeping with the streetscape. The tuck-under parking that we're utilizing is a very valid approach to reducing bulk and creating a streetscape that is pleasant. There are many... We counted 10 projects in a quarter-mile radius with the same tuck-under parking we're utilizing. So, again, we feel this is a perfectly suitable project for the community, one that will be hopefully celebrated in the future. And, yeah, we're looking forward to your approval tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comments?
It does.
Thank you. So, we will now close the public comment, public hearing. Thank you for everyone bearing with us there, as we did that twice to allow for public comment. So, City Council, discussion or questions? Council Member Woods?
I'd like to ask a question of staff if I can. Is staff still available? The question that I have from staff is, I heard the appellant say that there was a variance. I read the entire staff report and don't think or don't recall that there was a variance on this project. Is that true or false?
There is no variance for the project. As the architect has indicated, in the city's hillside ordinance, we do allow for a process called an administrative minor modification relative to height. The hillside ordinance does allow a height of up to 30 feet above adjacent grade upon the planning commission's approval of an administrative minor modification. And so, there is no variance. However, in the hillside ordinance, it does allow for an administrative minor modification.
Thank you. You know, the beauty of this neighborhood, this is a beautiful neighborhood, by the way. So, congratulations for one owning a home there, Mr. Bauer, and for building a home there potentially here, Mr. O'Donnell. So, it's a beautiful neighborhood. And the beauty of it is that it's a neighborhood that has an eclectic mix of custom homes. And that really makes this neighborhood unique to go to. And I have to agree with the speaker that spoke, is that we don't want to start negotiating each one unless there's some really bad detrimental effects on the adjacent neighbors. And there was no compelling evidence supplied by the appellant to make that determination. So, I'm in line with the planning commission and the architectural review committee and would move staff recommendation.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve staff recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second, and I have a question for staff.
Great. So, there's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Council Member Coors?
Sure. Just for staff, given this appeal and it go into planning, were the neighbors within 500 feet all notified of this?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And none of them have come forward to speak against us?
Other than those who have offered public comment letters or testimony this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to confirm that. Thank you, Mayor.
A motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem Middleton?
You're on mute.
Excuse me, clarify. Has any other neighbor spoken up either in support or opposition to this project?
I believe the neighbor to the south spoke relative to the project, had concerns relative to the roof deck, and the translucent panels were added to appease that neighbor. That's the only one that I am aware of. I don't know if the appellant or the architect are aware of any other neighbors who have spoken.
All right. I hear no one speaking up. So, we take every one's view seriously, but it is somewhat telling that there is not more than one.
Thank you. So, there's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please. And just to be clear, the motion was to move staff's recommendation.
Council Member Woods?
Yes.
Council Member Coors?
Yes.
Council Member Garner?
She's your candidate.
Ms. Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your work and being part of our community. We very much appreciate you doing this work with us at 10:30 p.m. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next item, so we can check in. So, we've completed all of the public hearing items. We took Item 3A and moved it to the next council meeting. And we have unfinished business. So, Item 4A, review of emergency orders related to COVID. We have also moved, we have also 5A for exotic extractions. We heard public comment on that, so I'd like to do that one tonight. And then, we moved Item 5B to the next council meeting as well. So, for City Council, would you like to move to Item 5...
Four.
5A, Exotic Extractions, request for administrative minor modification, since we heard public comment on that item. And they're probably participating in five hours into listening to this meeting. For that item, I would propose that council move forward on that item and then see where we are for the rest of the agenda. So, I have consensus around that? Okay. So, the next item is Item 5A, a request from Exotic Extractions LLC for an administrative minor modification for relief from the minimum separation distance requirement for a cannabis dispensary for the purpose of non-storefront delivery service at 1251 Montalva Way, Unit L, Zone M1P, Case 7.1641AMM. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor and members of council, this is a request for a separation distance waiver for a proposed dispensary. The dispensary is located within 90 linear feet of another dispensary. They are both in the same industrial building. Our code does require a minimum 500-foot separation distance between dispensaries. It should also be noted that the applicant is requesting this dispensary license so that they can do a delivery service. They're not really intending to do a walk-in dispensary for customers, but more for the delivery service itself. A dispensary license is required for delivery service. It should also be noted that the applicant is already licensed for transportation and distribution of cannabis products. In terms of the physical location of the dispensary and its delivery service, it would be located in Unit L of the building at 1251 Montalva Way. This is a site plan showing the building. As you can see, there is another dispensary, the Higher Vision Dispensary, that is located in Units F and G of the same building, and they are approximately 90 feet apart. In terms of the space itself, the dispensary where the product will be stored for delivery is located at the front and will occupy approximately 250 square feet within the tenant's space. In terms of the findings for the distance waiver, first of all, is relative to the use in the general plan. The use is allowed by the zoning. However, with the concentration of cannabis facilities within that building, it may conflict with the general plan goal for a balance of uses. As there are neighboring businesses that are also involved in cannabis operations, they will not be impacted by this dispensary. However, please note that there will be two dispensary licenses within 500 feet. The proposed dispensary will have to adhere to all requirements in Chapter 5.55 of the municipal code, and so it will comply and protect public health, safety, and welfare. There are no unique site features which would warrant, however, the separation distance waiver. The City Council has adopted optional findings under Resolution Number 24799. These are those findings in staff's assessment. The property is not blighted. That is one of the optional findings. In terms of the tenant's space and the vacant status of the tenant's space, it was last occupied in 2018, so within the last three years. In terms of concentration of dispensaries, as noted, there is an existing dispensary in the building. In terms of the hours and operations, it will have hours that will be compatible with adjacent businesses. And then, the final optional criterion is relative to participation in the social equity program, and the applicant is not a participant in that program. So, that concludes staff's assessment of the findings. We've presented you with two options this evening. You could make the finding that the dispensary, being that relative to a delivery service, will not impact adjacent businesses and will be consistent with the findings that are necessary for a waiver. Or you could also find that based on the fact that there is an over-concentration of cannabis businesses within the same industrial business, that there will be impacts from that concentration of use, and you could deny this request. That concludes staff's report to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council members? I see Council Member Coors and then Council Member Woods.
Yeah, I just have a question. So, I appreciate for delivering any dispensary license, but could this be conditioned that they could not do any other dispensary activities other than delivery from there?
I believe that, yes, you could place conditions upon this waiver and upon the license that would restrict the dispensary to delivery only.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is my question.
Council Member Woods?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I personally, for this particular area, do not have a problem with the close proximity, but I am concerned and I do have a question about the impact to the adjacent residential that's a little further away and to the Ascena neighborhood, which complained quite heavily about this particular area way back when, about odor. And I don't know how they're delivering it, how they're going with a quantity of product from, especially if it's flour, from the facility to the transport vehicle, and how that odor is mitigated.
So, in terms of dispensaries, the vast majority of the product is in sealed packages, which helps to eliminate the odor concerns. As we've heard from testimony from the city's odor control consultant, the primarily, primary impact from odor is relative to cultivation and certain types of manufacturing. The applicant is not engaged in those activities, nor do they have a license for those activities. We've seen that distribution and dispensaries typically have limited impacts relative to odors. And so, there should not be impacts to adjacent residences in either the neighborhood to the north or to the Ascena neighborhood to the east.
So, thank you. With that in mind, and with Council Member Coors' condition that they cannot be a storefront, I would move the staff recommendation, I would move to approve the waiver of the distance.
Thank you. So, there's a motion to approve the administrative minor modification for relief from the minimum separation distance requirement. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council Member Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Council Member Garner?
Yes.
Council Member Coors?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. So, would you like to do Item 4A, review of emergency orders related to COVID-19?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So, we will call that Item 4A, review of emergency orders related to COVID-19. If we can have a staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. So, I have a little bit more of a bust brief than I normally do and at a bit later of an hour than normal for me. So, this update's going to include our normal COVID update, as well as a look at some of the different requirements at the federal level, the state level, where we are here in Palm Springs, as well as a look at a couple other cities. And then, the last thing we're going to touch on is the Chamber of Commerce's COVID survey that ended, I believe, on Monday. So, the first slide, just an update on the COVID vaccination status here in Palm Springs. Overall, we're about 80% vaccinated. That is all people 12 years of age and older. This data was as of the 19th, so a few more people have probably gotten their second injection. But overall, about 80%, which is pretty good for the area. Next slide, you guys are all familiar with. It's the state six metrics that they look at for COVID, including positive cases, deaths, testing, hospitalization, and ICU rates. The big thing from this is we're still on that downward trend, that backside of this second wave. This slide, just Riverside County snapshot from going all the way back to March when COVID first hit us. We can see Riverside County has over 362,000 positive cases. The red circles are just to highlight that peak that we had around Christmas, and then the low that we had right before summertime, and then where we are for the past two months. As we look at that, the counties had an average of 26,000 weekly cases around Christmas time. The actual peak rate was 34,000 cases just the week of January 12th. As we came out of that wave, numbers got down pretty significantly, and they hit a low of 328 average cases weekly for the months of May and June, with the actual low point hitting 152 cases in one week in Riverside County. And where we've been for the past eight weeks, the average is a little over 3,400. What that doesn't show you is for the past three weeks, we've been around 2,500. So, while we've had a lot of improvement, we are not where we were pre-summer, but we are still making improvement. This is the same slides, just for Palm Springs. As you can see, Palm Springs, we've had just under 4,700 positive cases, and we'll look at those averages. So, at the same time periods, around Christmas time, we had 286 average weekly cases here in the city, with the actual peak being of 438 cases the week of January 12th. And then, we went down very, very significantly to seven cases per week, so one case per day. And the week of June 15th, we actually got down to four cases for the week. And then, for the past two months, we've been hovering at 33 cases per week. Last three weeks has been around 22. Another slide that you're all familiar with, the Coachella Valley, shows the same basic trend. For the past four weeks, we've seen this general downward trend from where we were at the height of summer. What that also shows is that we're still going to have the occasional outlier case. So, like, Indio had a pretty significant uptick last week, but again, that's an outlier week. Next few slides are going to cover wastewater treatment testing numbers. First slide shows the data going back to when we first started testing, and this data just mirrors the other metrics that we've seen, where we had the peak around Christmas, and then it came down significantly up until the first few months of summer, and then we hit this second wave that we've been on the backside for about five or six weeks now. As we take a closer look at the past 90 days of that wastewater treatment testing, we can see that we've been on a very slow gradual downward trend. We do have two peaks, one at around Labor Day and the other one on Indigenous Peoples' Day. We test the effluent on Mondays and Tuesdays, so it's always going to be after a busy weekend, and those are both Tuesdays, which was after a holiday. But the GT molecular estimates, the numbers do keep coming down. So, all the metrics that we're tracking are showing the same downward trend that's still above where we were back in May, but we're seeing improvement week over week. Next few slides are going to highlight some of the requirements and restrictions that are in place nationally, what we have here in Palm Springs, and then we're going to take a quick look at Los Angeles, San Francisco, and New York City. The CDC's requirements are still, they're recommending masks for all individuals regardless of your vaccination status in some locations. So, public transportation, hospitals, shelter facilities, airports, anywhere we have a large gathering of people or where you're going to have people that are at higher risk. The CDC is also recommending that unvaccinated individuals wear their masks in almost all settings. There's a few places where they say that it's okay if you're outside on a walk, things that we've seen in the past. The CDC is saying that vaccinated individuals can resume most normal activities, but they are encouraging masks inside facilities just where there's a lot of people. The state of California is a little bit more restrictive. Masks are required for unvaccinated people and recommended. and recommended for everybody in indoor settings, so retail, restaurants, amusement parks, and inside most government buildings. The state is also requiring proof of vaccination status or a negative COVID test for significant events, something that we're also doing here in the city. The other thing that we have is masks required regardless of vaccination status in indoor settings and even in outdoor settings where there's a large gathering of people, so Village Fest. And then proof of vaccination or negative COVID test for dining inside restaurants or drinking at bars. What we're seeing in other cities, Los Angeles, is a little bit more strict. They're basically following the state's guidelines for masking, but they are requiring proof of at least one dose of the vaccine to dine or to go to indoor events. They are considering requiring proof of vaccination for retail settings and anything that is an indoor setting. San Francisco is requiring masks in all indoor settings regardless of vaccination status. And they're requiring proof of vaccination for people that work in a high-risk setting, so hospitals and inside entertainment venues, restaurants and bars. One thing that San Francisco does keep posting is that most of their city staff are continuing to telecommute to work or telecommute from work. And then New York is requiring proof of vaccination for everybody 12 and up for most indoor activities. And they're strongly encouraging masks for all individuals regardless of vaccination status. The last couple of slides is just going to be the Chamber of Commerce survey results. One quick note that I have on this survey is the last survey the Chamber of Commerce did, participation was pretty low. There was only 428 respondents to the last survey. This survey had over 5,600 respondents. About 80% of those are Palm Springs residents, so significant participation in this survey. And what we have is, should masks be required indoors at stores and other businesses? Yes had 47% and no was 52%. You see, that's a pretty close 50/50 through all these questions with one exception. Should vaccination, should proof of vaccination or negative tests be required indoors at businesses? It's 40% yes and 59% no. Should businesses decide which health measures they want to use? Masks or proof of vaccination? It's 48% yes and 51% no. I apologize for the small font, but the way the chamber broke up their survey, this just made the most sense. So proof of vaccination or negative tests should be required to dine or drink indoors. 48% yes, 51% no. And this is the big, big one. Proof of vaccination or negative tests should be required to dine or drink outdoors. Only 25% said yes and 74% said no. Proof of vaccination or a negative test should be required for large ticketed or permitted events such as music festivals. 54% yes and 45% no. Masks should be required for large city-sponsored outdoor events such as parades where people will be in crowded spaces outdoors for several hours. 41% yes and 58% no. This question's kind of important because we have Pride coming next Sunday, oh, actually all next weekend. Should the city end all COVID rules for residents and businesses? 49% yes, 50% no. So it's pretty 50/50 split except for that one question. And here's just the overall, how the numbers broke down. As I said, about 80% of the respondents were Palm Springs residents. A total of 5,647 people completed the survey. A little over 9,000 started it. And then we do have a couple of comments. I'm not going to read them. They're available if council would like to read them. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much for the detailed presentation and all the information. We very much appreciate it. So are there questions or comments from council members? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I think we're all starting to feel a little tired. Not just simply from the meeting, but we're probably all getting a little tired of the restrictions that we've had to put in place. That said, we're entering into a really critical period. It was in November and December and January a year ago that things peaked and turned incredibly for the worse. I'm not in a hurry to start taking down all of the restrictions that we've put in place just as we are moving into a time period that a year ago produced such havoc and cost so many lives in our community. I would like to be able to say it's the time for us to step away from these, but I think we should proceed with some degree of caution. None of us know when the next variant is going to come or if there's going to be one. And I'm certainly willing to amend with caution again the restrictions we have in place as it becomes clear that they're not necessary and they're no longer being voluntarily supported. But given a choice right now, I'd like to see us get a little more time and a little more data before we begin to take down the restrictions we have.
Thank you. Councilmember Coors and then Councilmember Woods?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And pretty much in agreement with what Mayor Protem said. I think, you know, we're expecting that youth 5 to 11 will be eligible maybe in a week or two for vaccines. And given how many of their parents are essential workers, you know, indoors at restaurants and bars and other places, and can, even if they're doubly vaccinated, can still be contagious to them. You know, I'd like us to wait until they have had an opportunity to get vaccinated. I think the need to have them at Village Fest is one thing I would change now. I think people who are really concerned, you know, can get protective masks in that outdoor environment. And I think the one area the survey wasn't split was, or was split, but not as much, was, you know, parades, outdoor unticketed events, which we don't require them now. Village Fest, I think, is an exception. So I might be inclined not to have it for that. So that's my general thinking. I would note that even with all our tourists, we're still half the cases of every week, you know, over the last five weeks of Palm Desert, Per Capita, Desert Hot Springs, Cathedral City. And while the cases are down from the high, they're not down to as low as they were. And just reading today about, you know, the UK, where it's starting to get colder and they got rid of most of their rules, you know, they're now having terms of crisis situation once again compared to some other countries that have kept them in Europe. So I should say the concern is we're going into the colder months, but look forward to hearing whatever else.
Councilmember Woods?
Well, Councilmember Coors said what I was going to say, but I'll just add a little bit more to it. I don't think our outdoor mask mandate is being voluntarily supported. And I give you, you know, it's not. We had the homecoming parade. I didn't see anyone wearing masks on the sidelines or in the parade for that matter. We had our downtown park opening, the same thing. Nobody was wearing masks when they did that. Village Fest, if you go to Village Fest, no one's wearing masks. There are those people that will, that may want to wear them for their own protection, and I give them a thumbs up on that completely. I just think one area we want to change is maybe our outdoor events.
Thank you. I agree with that. So I agree that we should change for outdoor events that are not ticketed, that are not mass gatherings under state law. Because the data is that, and we've had the public health officer, the former one from the county, tell us that he's not worried as an expert about incidental exposure from being outside. And so I think we learned from the data that that's probably not a risk unless it's mass gatherings like a music festival where people are really mixing and really, really close. So I just wanted to say that and jump on top of that if I could to agree. But, you know, this pandemic is here to stay. We didn't know that, I think. Maybe we should have, but we didn't know that too, almost two years ago, a year and a half ago. And we started down this path. And, you know, it's interesting to see the split in 50/50. This has become such a polarized and political issue. But I'm really proud of all the work that we've done to protect our residents. And you can see that our residents, by and large, I think, want these protections and want to stay safe because we do have such an at-risk community. So we don't want to put additional burdens on businesses, but many businesses have asked us for these requirements. So I would just continue to ask businesses if this is impacting you. We want to hear about it, both negative and positive. I know we get a lot of those emails. But really, just a plea to our community, to our city staff, to everyone. Please get vaccinated. Please get your boosters. Please get your flu vaccine as we move into the winter. There are people in our community who are immunocompromised, who are not able to get the vaccine for various reasons. There are those of us who have children who are not able to get a vaccine and won't be for years and years. And yes, I'm very concerned that 0.04%, whatever it is, of the rest of the world has been vaccinated or has access to testing. And so we know that there will be new variants. So I very much unfortunately think the pandemic is here to stay. And we just need to continue to do our best to follow data-driven scientific approaches. And so it sounds like that is to continue a mask mandate indoors. I saw Cathedral City has continued theirs until December 10th. So I might offer that we do the same and align with our neighbor in Cathedral City, since we go back and forth between those cities pretty closely. And that we change the outdoor events for non-ticketed events that can be spaced properly. Councilmember Garner?
I do just want to raise up the businesses issue. I mean, there's been several businesses that have reached out to us who are not in our downtown area that are really struggling. And they don't have parklets. They don't have the ability to adjust in the same way that these restaurants do downtown. They're in a much different situation and it is impacting their business. And they're telling us that they're struggling, which makes sense, right? Because like they don't have all of the clientele that downtown does. So if a bunch of people decide not to eat downtown, eat at that restaurant downtown because they're actively checking, it's not a big deal because there's more people flowing in all the time. But if you're off the strip, it is a challenge. And that's who I've heard from in terms of restaurants having issues. It's the ones that are not downtown, Palm Springs. So I just want to raise that up. I mean, I completely understand the concerns that all of you are raising. And I absolutely continue to support wearing a mask indoors. But I do just want to put that out there that that there's, while there are people downtown that are cool with all of this, there's others who aren't. And I just struggle because when I talk to those businesses and ask, you know, what can we get you set up with parklet or something like that? Or it's just, they don't have the funds to do it. Because again, these are much smaller businesses than what you have downtown. So I just, I don't know if there's something else that we can do in the meantime to assist them, but I think we should do it.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I don't think that the Chamber of Commerce survey was at all limited to people who are downtown. And obviously, the city council cares about all of our business districts. And for those of us who represent districts who are not downtown, we continue to support all of our businesses. I've heard similar things from small mom and mom, pop and pop, mom and pop, small businesses, very small businesses, probably need a more gender-neutral term for those. We, I've heard the same. And so, you know, it's not all or nothing. I think that we've said that we can be really flexible to support businesses. So could it be that we change our interpretation even or the actual requirements for which restaurants this applies to, right? You know, one example might be Teriyaki Yogi, a mom and pop, small business in my district. And, you know, that's mostly carryaway. And they can't have a parklet. They have just very limited seating outside, right? And so we might not be worried about spread in the same way when there's four people in the restaurant, you know, or a small amount versus when there's like a large, large-scale restaurant that's indoors. So I might ask city staff if we are hearing that type of impact on smaller businesses. And I'm not sure if that's across the board, but if there might be ways that we could either interpret the ordinance to only apply to restaurants and businesses where there might be a more significant concern of spread or where we're hearing that there's just too burdensome to, you know, check vaccination when there's not staff to do that.
Mayor, unfortunately, I think that would be difficult to do. Even establishing clear criteria would be a little bit difficult. But then enforcement, I think, even more so. Truthfully, it's probably, I would recommend that we do have consistent policies. Do recall or note that for the takeaway services, for delivery drivers, for lots of other things, if the mask isn't coming off, those proof of vaccination or negative test requirements don't apply. That has been an area we've seen some confusion. Doesn't apply eating outdoors. So for those businesses that maybe have substantial takeout service and a few tables indoors, it's only those folks sitting indoors and removing the mask that would have to demonstrate the proof of vaccination or negative test. But as we said in the beginning when we rolled out these restrictions, I think it would be preferable to avoid exceptions that not only create confusion but administrative and enforcement difficulty. You certainly can. It's within your purview to direct those things. I just think it would be difficult.
Thanks. So, you know, we could look at if you have a host or hostess. Also need a gender-neutral term for that. A host, I think we say. We had talked about that. We could look at square footage, but I hear you on the enforcement of exceptions. And we're probably not going to design that policy right now. So are there other comments on that or other items during this discussion from council members? Councilmember Garner?
The other thing that was raised by another small business about this was having some kind of sense of timeline as well. Like when could they expect to be not having to check vaccination status? And I think the other hard thing about the restaurant vaccination status is that we don't, we just discussed this before, right? We don't have the ability to be regularly checking any of these businesses. And so you have some people who just don't check and they are not going to. They don't care or want to or have the capacity, whatever. And then there's others, like, you know, one of the restaurants that I've been speaking with, who it's the rules, so they're doing it, right? But it's hurting them, but they're doing it because it's the rule. So, but, you know, but they're hearing about other places that are not. And that's where I think the struggle really, really lies. Yeah, but if there's some way for us to, as we're moving forward in this, provide some sort of idea of when this might change in terms of, like, is there a threshold, right? Something like that, especially when we're talking about restaurants and businesses that are not in a tourist area. It's mostly local residents. So if 85% and 90% of our residents are vaccinated, you know, does that make a difference? I'm just asking.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, what I would like to suggest, and I think Councilmember Garner raised, is a great question. Everybody wants to know when this is going to end. So I think we loosen the rule. So I think we loosen the rules for outdoors. That seems to be clearly supported by all of us now. And come back at, at the meeting in the first of December and see where we're at. Are we starting to see a trend like last December or November and December? Or is, are things continuing to drop off in terms of number of exposures? And let ourselves be guided by some of the data over the next month.
Yeah, my concern is the yo-yoing of restrictions and rules, and that's what we've heard from our businesses and staff and workers, is that it's really difficult to follow, right? If there's a threshold, if there's, it's up and down, it's required and then it's not. So I like Mayor Protem's suggestion that we keep the rules in place. You know, based on the data, I would be willing to consider talking about the vaccination requirement, but then where are we going to be in two weeks if there's another surge? That's concerning to me in terms of changing the rules constantly on businesses, which we've heard from them too. Councilmember Woods.
You said what I was going to say, but I wanted to say one additional thing that was brought up earlier by the mayor. Get vaccinated. This is real. I just want to tell you, on a personal note, my brother is in the hospital, and something as easy as breathing, he has a breathing tube down both lungs. Something as easy as defecating, he can't defecate, you know. I mean, it's really a very serious, and he can't eat. They have to turn him. I just ask people to take this very seriously.
Thank you, councilmember Woods. So sorry to hear about that, thinking of you and your brother and your family.
I would make a motion that we loosen, remove the restrictions for non-ticketed outdoor events effective as early as we can do so. And that with the balance of the restrictions, we revisit them at the first meeting in December based on data that is collected between now and that meeting.
Thank you. So that is a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Woods, seconds. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Corrigan.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. So the next item, I assume that we're done for the evening. We continue the other items to the next council meeting. So next, we have city council and city manager requests and upcoming agenda development. City manager.
Mayor and council, I don't think there's a lot we need to discuss this evening with the items that are pushed to the November 4th meeting. I think the 4th and 18th are pretty much spoken for at this point. Do recall, we also have a special visioning session on the 20th, so we'll try to keep the meeting scheduled for the 18th a little shorter if we can. It's scheduled that way now, but given our rollover items, we might have to add a little bit to that agenda. So with that said, I don't think we need any additional direction, but staff is certainly open to any additional direction with future agenda items.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from council on that?
I would, yeah, I would like to ask staff to evaluate and report back to us at what point they think it is prudent for us to move back to the dais for our meetings and at what point it will become reasonable to resume having the public present for our meetings. And I don't think that's imminent, but let's, let's start talking about that as hopefully things improve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I agree. Other requests from council members or direction on upcoming agenda items? Seeing none, we will next move to adjournment. The next regular city council meeting will be held on November 4th, 2021. That's next Thursday at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, city staff, for your work and for staying late with us. Thank you to the public, and we will see you next week. Have a great.